Sorry, I'll mute. Jerry, can you hear us?
I can hear you now.
Okay, Sally, can you hear us?
Mayor, you're probably gonna have to reopen.
No, I can't. No, it's fine.
Did you hear me open the meeting?
I didn't hear you do that, no.
Okay, alright, let's do that over. Okay, I need a motion to open up this meeting for September 12th, 2022 work session.
So moved.
Second, all in favor. Alright, there you go. Alright, thank you. Neil?
A motion to adopt the agenda.
We did that, that was on, alright, we have to now, yeah, a motion to adopt the agenda. So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
Bye.
Neil, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Okay, yourself?
Can't complain. Why don't you walk us through where we all?
Sure, happy September. Everybody, okay, so I sent a progress report and an updated schedule. I'd say we had initially for the comprehensive plan update, yes.
We're having trouble hearing you.
Sure.
Neil, speak louder, please.
Okay, is this better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Walk to the back of the room.
Okay, I think my headset volume was set low. Still hard to hear? Did I hear that?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. With respect to the comprehensive plan update, I sent a progress report and an updated schedule. Initially, the schedule was ambitious in terms of getting, you know, getting to September or getting to October where we would have another draft of the next comprehensive plan to review. But I wanted to walk you through really quickly the different things that I've been doing. We've been doing during this, during since, since we last spoke, and this is really a summary of everything, and really what this has been involving is not just me playing around the document. My colleague Sarah Brown is also working on parts of this with me as well. There's been a lot of re-engagement with all the committees and the planning boards as well. So I've, we had a full meeting at the planning boards, they, they had a, they had some, some folks in the planning board who reviewed the entire document and had very good critiques about just, you know, not just necessarily just, you know, land, land development matters and zoning matters, but in general about the document, so that's very helpful. I did receive, the planning board is also, has sent me part and part, a number of zoning, suggested zoning changes, and I'm waiting for another, another, the second pass at that, at some zoning changes for the, that could be included into the comprehensive plan update. But essentially, my, my, my job has been to re-engage all the committees, because that's essentially how I went through the process of the, put it together, the draft from November 2020. And so I re-engage with, with as many of the committees as I could, starting with talking with the chairs. And then when I could, I participated in a meeting, and the aim has been, number one, update the content of the plan. But number two, also have the committees look at anything that's more long range, that's already in the plan. Anything that's missing that they've been thinking about, and also if, it also challenges them to say, hey, what are several things that you're looking for long term? What are several log things on your, that really need addressed in the long term? Because sometimes a lot of the committees are working on day-to-day issues. For example, Parks and Rec has a lot of day-to-day issues, and so I spoke with them about some, some, you know, big, bigger picture things that need to be addressed, and that's, that's really where the comprehensive plan can, can have a role in setting for those, those, those things. I think with respect to the, the two things in the, in the current, in the, in the November 2020 draft, I think the two, two aspects of that draft are concerning me in that they, they don't address two very priority topics that are, you know, in the Village today, which is affordable housing and resilience. The current chapter is, it's good theoretically, and has some good things, but I think I've, I am working with the flood mitigation with Tony Gelber, the chair, as, as a start. I really want to look at the, the holistic plan they have together, they've been talking about. And I think looking at how the conference plan can, 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 can can be linked up with that, and how the conference plan can help further that, and so there's a whole range of things in, in that, and I'm so, part of the processes is just people have been away in August, their meetings have been canceled, so that's been part of the, the delay in the timeline is catching up with people now in this month. So I think as far as the, the help from the BOT is just to, you know, to, for those who are liaisons to the committees, I think, you know, I've already spoken with, with many of you, but just, you know, make sure that you can reach the, the chairs and the committees and, and, you know, make sure that they are able to, you know, get back to me if they haven't been able to, for some reason. And that'll be one, one area that, that I could use some assistance. And the second is
Which ones are you having trouble setting in?
Uh, sure, I think, so I'll tell you who I've, who I'm, I think the, the committee environment I'm all set with. They, they, you know, I met with them very early on, the and then the, I think it's, it's really the traffic commission. The, I am in, I am in conversation with, with Tony at the flood mitigation committee, but I think that will be, it will be helpful to kind of to really get going with the flood mitigation advisor committee and, and get moving on that. He's, he's been reviewing the chapter. But again, like, yeah, people, the reason is not because people don't want to be engaged, but they've been very busy in August, so. And then I think, so the, and I'm also, so let me start again, CFT is fine. Municipal parks and recreation, that's great. I think it's the, it's the traffic commission, the flood mitigation drivers and commission are the two that are really key that, that I really need to want to engage with sooner rather, rather than later. The, I also went to the village and visited, just because I hadn't been there in a while, and I, I just refresh my memory. There is this, there is an aspect, let's see, the, the yellow highlights in this memo, I just, there's several of them here. And those involve public engagement, and that came up in the conversation with the park, the wreck and parks commission about, you know, what sort of public engagement is going to be happening during this process, and so I, I, you know, I mean, I agree, I think, you know, this, this is not something that can be just, you know, updated and checked off and adopted, I think there needs to be a little bit of, of broad-based engagement in this, and so my suggestion, my suggestion is whether, there's two things. I don't know if it's appropriate, but on the, on the 14th, there's the one year after Hurricane Ida meeting. We do have, I do have these postcards that I designed in English and Spanish way back that, just to promote the, the comprehensive plan process, if it's appropriate, you know, we could, we could have those distributed at that meeting or, or another meeting, I don't know if it's appropriate, so I leave up to, to your guidance to that to start to bring exposure to the project. The website actually now has a function where it can be, where it's a English and Spanish versions. And that's something I, I've set up in the, excuse me, during, in, over the last few months that I had it included in this progress support. And then also considering a, in, in, excuse me, a, a public event in November when we've produced the next draft, the next draft, or about to produce the next draft of, of the, of the, of the comp plan update. What that, what that brings us to is is essentially where I believe to be a January adoption timeline. And I think if there are concerns about, I think, you know, if, if there are concerns about, about, you know, the timing being lengthened, I think I would, I would say that, again, like, I think the, I think the, the, the two priority topics in this, in this plan, in the draft, that the, the two priority topics of the comprehensive plan, there, there are several of them, you know, affordable housing is one of them, flooding resilience is another one, I really, they really need to be strengthened, and it'll take time, a little more time to work with the committees to get those into a place where they, they are meaningful and, and otherwise it's just a plan with a bunch of updates. So, but that's, that's my brief presentation of where, where we're at, at the, at the process. Any questions or suggestions or comments?
Well, I just do, I do want to point out, I'm fine, where is this? How's it going? Does it kill your audio? I did, right? Give me a sec. If I move away from it. It's this thing. No, this is, this is where the audio is coming from.
I can, I can hear now. No, I can't hear now.
Make sure I have this.
Oh, there's a serious feedback.
Right, yeah, okay. I just want to point out, I'm, I'm fine with having more public events. In case somebody's watching, I just want them to know that this, this is the continuation of a process that had public events. Right. I didn't want people to think that there hadn't been any public input up, up until this point. This was something that had been going on a couple of years ago and got sidelined via COVID. And we're now taking it up again. So I'm fine with all the public input and public events that you, you suggested, but I just didn't want the public to think that we had gone this far down the road without public input already.
Sure, sure.
That was, you know.
And that's, that's correct, that's absolutely correct, right.
And I'm fine with the postcards.
Neil, you're saying that you haven't been able to get with the FEMA committee. Are you willing to meet with them at night? They have a meeting. I think it's, not next Tuesday, Tuesday after next.
Yeah, absolutely, if, if it's in person, I can, I'll do, I'll do in person, if it's Zoom, I'll do Zoom, whichever.
It can be Zoom, I believe, but I, I'll, I'll follow through and make sure that that's standard one way or another.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, good thing.
And traffic is tomorrow.
Okay.
Are you available tomorrow?
Yeah, I can be available, what is it, 7:30 is when, when they start typically?
I, I, I think it's seven.
I think it's seven.
Yeah.
Sure, sure, I think, yeah, that, that's, that's great.
So you have a chapter that you put in front of us for tonight? Is that what this is?
No, this is just a, what Neil distributed to me today to give to the board is just a progress report, a schedule, which is what I gave you.
Right.
That's, that's, that's.
That's not Neil.
That's not Neil.
Okay.
Alright, anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns for Neil?
Neil, thank you, thank you for the update. I have, I have a question. I understand this to be a progress report that I appreciate. And an updated schedule because it modifies, it lengthens a little bit the initial proposal that you gave us and we approved.
Right, that's correct.
The third piece is the budget. Does this mean that the budget's changing?
No, I mean, there's nothing new really, you know, these postcards have been produced. There's, you know, the only additional thing that maybe is, is I need, well, if we are to have a, the only item I think that would, may require an adjustment in the, in the, in the scope and budget is a public event. And so I need to, you know, our job is to come up with some, some suggestions on what that exactly will entail. And that would, that's the only piece, other than that, everything else is part of what we have in our scope. I'll, I'll, I'll look back though, just to confirm that, but I, because I know that we, we had put in a few, I had put in a few placeholders for some sort of survey potentially. But I think if there's going to be a more public, a public event or workshop, then we, yeah, we need to look at the, re-look at the scope and the budget to see if there needs to be an adjustment for that.
I do understand, and, and to nail it down, could you bring that to us in two weeks? Or before that, as soon as you have it, so that it can be approved in two weeks, so that we finally have an updated plan with an updated budget. Because I do understand the need to re-engage with a few.
Yeah.
But, but if we don't, you know, have a plan to see how many events are necessary, and then, then this is going to drag and drag. That's really my substantive comment, to put more, more background to what the mayor was saying, actually, this process started six years ago, almost six years ago, when I, when I was, when I was sworn in. And I'm now about to leave a post, and I don't see the finish line. So it worth, it's worth doing a few reflections. Actually, I brought it up, the first day I was sworn in, was a different mayor. Different mayor, and in that first year, we actually knew this. There was full agreement to get this done. Because it was not that I had a brilliant idea or anything, it's just that it, the comp plan called for an update five years later, and it had already passed the five years. So everybody agreed, let's move on. And actually, it was five years from the adoption, but the process had started in 2008. So now you can count how many years out they, this is. And the comp plan is key, because that's where you nail the priorities. Then you have a lot of debate on how to do the policy, how to draft the laws, how to adjust your budgets around things. But if we don't have, if you don't have the first lineup of priorities, then, then, then that actually complicates the work or delays the work of this board, and I, that's, I've seen part of that in the last six, six years. The, the, the plan in itself, did very took many, many years, and it did a lot of good work on zoning, on some zoning updates, climate, energy, resilience was inserted. Affordable housing a little bit. But I think what really stopped this was when we, when we, when we got to the moratorium before addressing this one. But, so that, six years later, what I'm, what I, I'll just wrap it up like this. It is necessary for this community to have that comp plan, because it's a list of priorities. And if we don't, if we don't agree on what is needed, and then zoning follows, then, then we can talk a lot, a lot, but it's, it's something that is central, it's a charter that needs to be finished, so I hope that the, we stick to this updated schedule. Let's just nail the public participation and the other engagement, so since we've been through this a lot, this together, I, I thought I'd give you some background on this lengthy statement. Because we actually started with a, with a, with a RFP, we examine lots of law firms to have done this project, we selected the one you were previously. So this process is taking such a long time, and let's really get it to the finish line with, with all this input. But then let's really make sure that it happens, even if it happens, you know, next year, whenever it needs to happen properly. But let's have this scope, time, budget lined up.
Absolutely.
Okay, Neil, the, the thing that concerns me in listening to you are the two missing items, or incomplete items, affordable housing and flood mitigation, which do not seem to be easy lifts. So is it, is it likely that we're going to be able to come up with that in this timeframe? I mean, where are we on those two? On those two situations? Do we have goals set at all in the plan for, for that, or, or what do we need to do?
I mean, with respect to the statement of priorities and vision, those, those two topics are, you know, are, are without, are, are, are there. The, the piece that, the flood mitigation piece, you know, there's so much, I think it's, it's to the extent that, well, what the, after having, you know, having been at to the, the Army Corps meeting, yet the, it was recognized that the Army Corps project is just the foundation, and then there's a whole host of other actions that need to be, need to take, need to take place. And from what I've been observing, I've reviewed a lot of the meeting minutes and agendas for the flood mitigation advisory committee, and all the other committees, she committees for that matter. And I, you know, I, I appreciate their thinking they've been doing on this holistic approach, there's a lot of specific projects that they've identified and possibilities. And so for, for, to, to my mind, for what needs to happen for the resilience chapter is in, to whatever, to whatever extent that is developed, it should be part of the comprehensive plan, and to what extent the comprehensive plan can help advance that, especially when it comes to, I mean, now there's a lot more funding available, you know, they always say that having something in the comprehensive plan is, is a plus points in terms of applying for grants. And that's just, that's just one, one, one aspect of it, but I think if to the extent that the comprehensive plan can be a place where this holistic plan for flood mitigation can be communicated, mapped, I think that'll be, that'll be, that'll be effective in of itself, because, you know, the comp plan can't have, you know, we're not going to be inventing, you know, hiring somebody and, and doing extra studies for resilience, we're going to rely on what the committee has been putting forth. And then as far as affordable housing goes, that's, that's the, that's the catch is to look at, you know, specifically revisit, looking at what changes happened during the moratorium study. And then it's, it, I think the comp plan needs to put into place several actions so that affordable housing is more, is meaningfully addressed on a policy, on a policy standpoint, for example, whether, whether it needs to be, you know, whether the comprehensive plan needs to have a recommendation to develop an affordable housing strategy, or whether there are one or two strategies that the village can start working on right now. And so for affordable housing, I think that's where the conference plan can start to have a meaningful policy role. Right now, it, it, it addresses affordable housing as a topic, but it doesn't really provide any action plan for that.
And that's for this board to determine, correct?
And in terms of the action plan, I mean, yeah, it's, it's part of, you know, what the, the court to, to, the, the board to review and, and, and determine if, if that's the appropriate approach. The, whatever we put in the, in the comprehensive update for as far as affordable housing action plan, that's going to be reviewed by the BOT, and there may be other suggestions that, that come from that, from the review.
So we, 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 we obviously, we're going to talk to flood mitigation about, about flood mitigation. When we talk about, we obviously need to address the comprehensive parking, that would be a traffic commission, correct?
Traffic commission, parking, all the mobility issues, the things that that have already been accomplished, as well as intersection improvements. And then also a little longer, longer, I think, you know, some of the agenda items today, I saw the 25 mile per hour village speed limit, I mean, those are all, those are all kind of, you know, big picture and, and things that are, that the comprehensive plan should capture, but also thinking a couple of years ahead, you know.
And we're, and we're looking for suggested long-term goals, things that we're looking to accomplish as we, as we go forward, am I correct?
Absolutely, long goals and in any, any, and any sort of specific actions that need to be done. You know, whether it's, yeah, that's, that's what I've, essentially the conversations I've had with the other committees, the wreck and parks is to, you know, you, you, you know, you're experts in, in what you do, and I need to get a sense of, of what you're, what things are, are really need attention, bigger, bigger picture things that need attention, and that what the comprehensive plan could put forth, put forward.
So, so who weighs in on affordable housing then?
It'll, well, it'll be planning board BOT, I think, you know, it'll be up to us to try to come up with a series of steps, strategies to consider. And the BOT, the planning board, you know, there, there's a reprocess built into this and, and to, 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 to start getting at that.
I think, I think the part of, part of what we have to keep in mind is, is that the comprehensive plan is a grand vision for the community as expressed by the Board of Trustees with input from residents and different boards and commissions. But at the end of the day, you know, it's the Board of Trustees that has to, that has to make decisions, and it's, it's, it's a reflection of the goals that people elected us to decide what, what is, you know, appropriate path for the community to follow.
So we're gathering input, especially on, on these two, I'm going to call them missing items, but undefined items, affordable housing and flood mitigation, we're gathering input for the board to make a final determination, what, early next year, is, is that?
That's, that's his time.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's well put, Mayor.
I wanted to understand it, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, but I mean, they're, they're just.
Necessary for the, for the update, but that's, that's like, that's the next.
Not missing, but, yeah, we, we, we haven't decided what our.
Oh, let's add those.
I got it, I got it.
Right.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns for Neil?
Let me, let's finish or follow up on, on this item of how to identify the level that, that needs to be developed a little more by you, Neil, I think you're the one who has to lead us here. Because, again, six years ago, we, we knew, and I was at the flood, but flood mitigation, and you had a list already, most of the things that we were talking six years ago, the key is that they go into the plan. And then that they become part of an action item list that actually by, in the, in the November 20, in the November 2020 version, you have already a lot of this, and you have what's the to-do list, so that is the point, and then you will see a lot of the vital things of this community. a lot of the vital things of this community already there. So, so if you start the discussion all over again,
Yeah.
you'll delay this, I don't know how long.
Well, I think, I think flood mitigation will get, we'll get to the, get to something pretty quick.
There was a lot of things. Six years ago, Mr. Gilbert was there. So we pulled things and many of them, so I, I, what I think is at the level of what, how to pull this into the update. That's where you need, need to, need to kind of identify if, if anything is missing to what, what guidance you need from this board. And also get it us hopefully in two weeks or, or at the max, so that this doesn't, so that doesn't drag more than a year, I guess. That's, that's really where we can.
And, and I don't want to bring this up, but Neil, we're just, what we're looking for from these committees are, are, are simple declarations of, of goals. Am I correct?
Goals and, 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 and specific, um, you know, specific questions or specific, like, for example, you know, for Parks and Rec, you know, I suggest for, for the Action Parks Commission asked them. So, you know, given sea level rise projections, you know, and harbor island park, you know, what's, what's the future of, of, you know, is that, that as, as a suggest, that's a question that, that, you know, I think, you know, needs to be resolved. And that's going to require in the, now the complaint can go into a certain degree of, it, comprehensive plans don't generally go into specific detail uh, on, on everything because it covers a lot of ground. But to the extent that it can start to say, okay, there needs to be, uh, examination of, of, you know, reallocation of, of recreation opportunities and so on and so forth, due to potential sea level rise. For the traffic commission, right, it's, it's kind of like, what, what is the, you know, there's so much that has been happening already with the redesign of intersections, the traffic calming, I've seen improvements. You know, in the next, you know, five years, what needs to be, um, what needs to be either, what are the goals and what needs to be done? So for example, uh, you know, bicycle facilities on the roads, you know, uh, you know, that's, that's something that the 2012 plan recommends is do a bicycle plan. And, you know, is that, is that one of the, one of the key things that needs, that the traffic commission think needs to happen in the next few years is to actually do a bicycle plan. So, um, goals and kind of, uh, and, and steps that, um, that, uh, that these commissions, that these committees, uh, would, should, would think would be appropriate for addressing in the comprehensive plan. Thinking, thinking big picture in the next, next three to five years.
All right. And you'll be able to lead this through, uh, at least the traffic commission tomorrow?
Uh, yeah, I think I can, uh, I mean, I've given, uh, I think it's Mr. Brian Williams, uh, uh, the drafts, uh, of, of the, of the, of the, of the chapter nine. So, uh, to the extent that he's, uh, seen it, I don't know to the extent the other committee members have seen it, but I'll do my best to, to lead a similar discussion I did with the wreck and parks commission about what I, what I really, you know, what I, what would be the best to help me in this process for the comprehensive plan update.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from anybody else? Okay, Neil, thank you very much. Please, uh, keep us abreast.
Absolutely. And a proposal of the public engagement. I'll get started thinking about that.
Yeah, if you could have it for us at our next meeting, that would be extremely helpful.
Okay. Uh, I, I just need to get them printed somewhere. I have, I have the final files, English and Spanish. And, um, I just would need to, I guess I can get them printed somewhere in the village and, um.
What, what, just send it to Jerry and
Okay.
it'll probably be easier for us to print them.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'd be good to have some on Wednesday night and then.
Yeah, that's what it's used for. Yeah.
Okay. Great.
Jerry, you got that? Or Dan, you got it? Jerry's?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Neil.
I got it.
All right.
I'll probably be listening on some of the other agenda items because they're pertinent too.
Well, you're allowed.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Proposed wetlands law from amendments from HCCMC. Have, have we ever heard back from HCCMC?
I think they're discussing it at their work session tomorrow.
Okay, so let's move on. Reforming, uh, in a sense, meaning reorganizing, uh, the Long Island Sound Watershed into municipal council. This was something that was, uh, very active a few years ago. Phyllis Whitner from the town of Maric was an organizing force in it. A friend here, Mr. Sonoff, when he worked with the, uh, Scars though, was an organizing force in it. And, uh, I think for us, it behooves us to join because we have nothing to lose. Cause, uh, you know, if, if we could cajole and shame our, uh, upstream neighbors, uh, to keep their water on, uh, their property, as it were, instead of inundating us or in some way, I, I think what it fell apart was when they started talking about, uh, making a sanitary, not a stormwater uh, system tax.
There was a push for a regional stormwater management district. We had actually gotten to the extent where, uh, we were preparing legislation to be considered by the state legislature. But that was also at the time where our former governor, uh, was, uh, having these things about the levels of government in New York state. And there really was an appetite to create what it's seen as
Which former?
additional level of government. Uh, there'll be a Mr. Cor.
Say his name three times and he appears. Okay, so does anybody have any concerns with doing this?
Yeah.
When we discussed this at the last, at the last meeting, a couple Bob had concerns about the actual language. He was prepared, you know, suggestions. Have we got Marco? Were you anywhere on that?
Let me, I can address that. The city manager from New Rochelle was going to have, uh, their, uh, council work on drafting a new intermunicipal agreement. Uh, that was the update I had back in July. I haven't seen anything yet. My guess is, you know, July and August are not the
They're not tuning in.
not the easiest of times to get.
So let's just wait until we get that back.
I'm still waiting for something for us, something for us to respond to.
Okay.
So there's no ask yet, really?
There's no, no ask yet, but yeah, this is just.
But in gen- in general, I feel as, I'm going to correct me if I'm not as a consensus to participate.
Something we should be doing and maybe we can talk them to a little faster.
Now that the summer is over.
Yeah.
People have had enough.
Chuck's leaving. Chuck's leaving in December. He's probably gone already.
He's beyond trotting?
He's done.
What, what is that called now? It's called quiet quitting.
He didn't quietly quit though.
No, he did not. Yeah. CMOM, Capacity Management Operations and Maintenance Program for Village Sanitary Sewers, aren't for regular meeting. Jerry?
Mayor, since December of 2020, we've been talking about the CMOM program.
Before you start, I'm recused, so I'll have to step down.
Okay. Hi, Jerry.
Since December of 2020, we've been discussing the CMOM program, which is a requirement of our, uh, order on consent and, um, lawsuit with the, um, Save the Sound people. After many, many meetings, uh, staff meetings as well as engineers, including their engineer, we have a final version of the CMOM, which is, um, probably, well, unfortunately, I think it's going to be a model for the community, I say, uh, for the state. Cause unfortunately, we have the most comprehensive CMOM program, uh, that's probably ever been created. Early on, I provided the board by email, the, um, CMOM program from our neighbors next door, all seven pages of it. And, um, through many, many discussions and a little pushback from me, the attorneys for Save the Sound and their engineer, I've asked for this document, which we can live with, but it requires a, a lot of work and additional staff in the future. And it's just one of those things that, uh, that we have to do. I wish we had a choice, but we don't have a choice. Mark knows about it. Mr. Spalzino has tried to get us extension after extension after extension successfully. And we appreciate the Super Law Group for allowing us to do that. But, uh, this is probably the best model of a CMOM program that's ever been created.
Uh, I, I saw that the Super Law Group and Save the Sound had, uh, some suggestions. Uh, are we able to accommodate their suggestions?
Yeah, we are at this point able to accommodate their suggestions.
Okay, so this should.
I have, I have no doubt that this will satisfy them. Uh, and then the next step and this month will be the final draft of our, uh, our agreement to get out of this.
I mean, so this is a big piece of how we can get out of that.
This is the second big piece, Nora. The first big piece was five and a half million dollars.
Right.
Yep.
And then we have that other project that we have to commit to.
Yeah. So, so they're, they're okay with us. They're comfortable with us. They're not threatening to take us back to court. Uh, because we're working through, and it takes a long time, you, you know, like I started. But they're comfortable with us now, um, managing everything that has been repaired. And then of course, uh, they believe us that they, that, you know, we're committed to fixing additional meter areas in the future. So.
So all, I, to echo what Tom said, I just have like a June 2nd, no, February 2nd memo from them with a bunch of, you know, thing, a to-do list. And I, that we just got the, this document today because it's pretty new. You just got finished last week and week before. So just everything they asked for is in the documents. So we should be, okay.
It's everything's in there. This is, this is the final, final version, uh, that they and we, mostly I, have agreed to, to move forward.
They said jump. We said how high.
Come on, if you want us to stay there.
Yeah. If, you know, I'm not a big jumper here, so it was hard. It was hard for me. But, but we're, we're there. We're there. Um, we're, we're getting to the end of this ordeal. So.
And, and at the end of the day, what we will have is better maintained sewers, uh, and, uh, cleaner water in the long run.
And, and a serious, a serious guidance document for our staff to follow. Now, our staff is, you know, if we, if we ask them to work, they'll work. We just got to tell them what they need to do. And, and this document really helps us because not only was Arcadis a big part of it, but, but, uh, Save the Sounds engineering consultant was also a big part of it.
Okay, good.
And it, and we've been asked, because it's been on now for two months, but, but the document wasn't ready. We're asking to push it and adopt it tonight. So you can move forward with getting this whole thing behind us.
Yeah, it's just an operational document that provides guidance that we really, staff level and, uh, engineers had to negotiate as far as what we can and can't do. And, uh, I did, you know, I was able to, to make some headway on some of the things that we can't commit to. And they accepted that, but we've included things that other communities probably will not have to do in their CMOM, um, program. But it's okay. We're, we can live with it. And that's really at the end of the day, what we're looking for as far as, uh, getting out of there or consent, uh, or order on consent.
Delighted to know that, um, I'd like to read it. I don't, I got it two minutes old. But, you know, there are things in it that I'm not sure that are phrased the way I would be comfortable with. For instance, I just looked open to page eight in the listing specific companies. I don't have a problem with listing this. If we're saying presently they are. But if this is an operating plan, you know, things change, companies may change. I think the companies that are perfectly fine, I have no problem with that. But I think it's that type of thing of, you know, that, um, I, I don't know what the other issues may or may not be. You've said that this is going to commit us to additional staff. I'd like to know more about what that is and what we have to anticipate. You know, it'd be nice if we could have gotten this a little earlier. I'd like to, you know, read it. I'm happy to. Just in the second meeting. Comfortable just taking it without having.
There's no question for me in there, is there? You guys can decide whether you approve it or not.
No, I got a question for you. What, what would be the ramifications to not approving it tonight?
I don't have, we don't have our village attorney here. I don't know. I think only our village attorney can answer that question.
Okay.
But there's a, there's an anxious level to get everything done by the end of this month. And I'm not on every phone call, um, trustee Natchez and, and mayor, I'm not on every phone call. So I don't know what level they're at because I have to handle the other part of it, the operational and the, the management of the project. And I don't think my man Mark knows either, because we talked earlier today.
I, I think this is, it, it, it's important to get this done and, and, you know, if you looked at what was on the backup, most of that is also covered. You know, I, I just, I, I don't want to. Those companies were putting their, Jared, because that's what they wanted. They wanted to know that there was somebody that was going to be on an emergency basis.
And I don't have a problem with it, but the way it's, where did I have a problem?
And, and keep in mind, if, if, you know, if, if, if the board, if the board isn't comfortable with adding staff, then I can just contract the workout that needs to be contracted out, um, in the future. I just, you know, we just, we just have to have a program and we have to have it approved by the board. And we have to have it in the umbrella or under the umbrella of the total global agreement with them.
And I don't have a problem with any of that. And I don't have a problem with the concept of the plan. Uh, but we have not gotten a draft at this point. And this is the best that we've had. It's a modified draft. It's what has previously been circulated internally, but not with the board. You know, you're saying, saying it's committing us to, um, additional staff. I'd like to try and understand that a little bit better. And then we still can get it done this month. We still need to.
You know, I, I think it's important before we throw any more roadblocks and stuff that has to get done uh, with, with, you know, whatever, picky un issues, uh, to just get it done and get the sort of damocles off of the top of our heads. And show good faith.
Jerry, are you comfortable with it?
Yes, I've been working on it for over two years. I've had countless meetings negotiating portions of it. And I understand that there may be some apprehension, but the reality is that Save the Sound is not going to change anything in this contract or in this program. Not going to allow us to change anything. It's going to be the way it is. Period.
And in this case, they have a heavy hammer over us.
No.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, it, this isn't even a question of can they do it? They definitely can.
It's as big as it gets. I think next meeting goes much better when we actually bring Save the Sound attorneys in. If the CMOM is approved and all you're doing is negotiating the final agreement.
Yeah, the final pain.
I think it goes much smoother.
I agree, and I think we have to do this. I just, I, I, I do think it would have been good if we had sort of seen the drafts. You know, it's hard to get something at three o'clock and have to approve it. And I know, I mean, I know you have all been working on it, but it, I think in the future, just trying to like give us the draft so we can be more comfortable with it might just be a better strategy.
No, and, and I'm glad that you, that you, that you said, you know, where's the final? Because that's when I immediately called Mark and I said, Mark, I thought Bob sent it to the board with the information. Um, then I found it and sent it right over. So.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, then here we are. Alright, so it seems like there's a consensus to put it off for tonight. The ESCO for appeals, uh, I asked that that be taken off the last time we talked about it.
Can we have the layers here to discuss it?
That was a separate.
It's a separate. Traffic Safety Commission recommended, recommends no parking restrictions in Old White Plains Road and the Maric and Madison Street. Did you guys talk about this the last time?
We did. We did. Didn't we?
We talked about, the last time we talked about you were here.
I was here?
Yeah.
No, I wasn't.
Yeah.
No, I wasn't.
Yeah, because we didn't, we didn't, we didn't have backup for it. We only talked about.
It was with. It was with the one when he was on vacation, when he was, I wasn't here.
But we didn't talk about it because we only talked about the stuff that was on for that regular agenda.
We put it all. Okay, uh. I've been down there a couple of times and my concern is that it's a lot of parking. And a hundred and ten feet is five spots. And forty feet is seven spots. All together. That that, I mean, I I I could see removing some parking, but that's a lot to me.
I I think the one hundred and ten feet is a um is, you can explain that, I think that's a mistake.
The measurements identified in the draft resolution are the perimeter of the park.
Okay.
And I think so there were, this was discussed at the rec meeting, wrecking parks this week. And I, because that they made the initial recommendation in June to the traffic commission.
Oh, let's get Victor. I'm sorry. Would you again, thank you. Uh because he at one point uh worked with Save the Sound. Before it was a trust. I said, somebody keeps.
Mayor, Mayor, we use eighteen to twenty feet per spot. I think you said forty feet was like seven spots, no.
No, 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 no. What I said was a hundred and ten was five spots, forty feet is two spots, so all together it was seven.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I misheard that. Okay.
And 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 from my recollection from um liaison at that the meeting, I don't recall that it was seven spots. I recall that it was more like four.
That's what, and that's what, so Tina Maresco.
Yeah.
Maresco, who's the chair of the Wreck and Parks Commission, who was at that meeting.
Yeah.
Said that and then and so then remember the public was at their meeting, so I I I honestly think. This is asking for more parking to be removed than was the initial request, for whatever reason, like there were a lot of cooks in this.
It was, it was a, it was a.
So.
On on Madison Street now. I guess about a few feet in is a sign that says no parking here at a corner.
Right.
Okay, so.
Which happens to be the delivery spot, the the spot where all the delivery trucks for.
Yeah, yeah.
Essentially, this is a couple of additional spots down to the part where um the grass meets the uh the pavement on in the park.
But not as it's written. I think it should go back to the traffic commission for clarification. I I don't know, I mean, is that.
We we could.
We can do it. I think we can, I think we can.
I think we do this. I mean, if if you said Madison Street uh from the, from from where the sign is now. Uh forty feet. It would take two parking spots.
I, you know, I.
And and then forty feet on Old White Plains Road. So that's four parking spots. It's a, it's a lot better than seven.
Yeah, and 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 that's what I had envisioned when I saw it. And um uh and that's what I thought they were approving, but somehow it got turned into a hundred and ten feet. I don't know how that happened.
And I think one of the things that the, at the wreck and parks commission. Was that. They were trying to make a uniform as as it is in most parks with no parking in front of a park entrance. Like that's like park entrances themselves are open, so. I just hope that we're guessing it right and I'm just in the future, when we get stuff from the traffic commission. Photographs or a map might be helpful just because that way everybody's.
We, I I think there there are photos around.
Today, today, uh today, Jeff, onto photos or.
I was down there last night and and again today.
Yeah, it 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 helps to go actually go download.
Yeah, but I also think if it's going to be back up on the agenda, you know, the whole public isn't going to be necessarily going down to look at it, so I think.
But we have to make a decision, we should.
As a policy, it's a good idea to have, you know, a map where you can actually see what we're, you know, what the hundred and ten or what the forty is into the future. I'm not saying for tonight, I'm just thinking of that.
Curious as to why the, there are timelines. On uh. There of no parking now.
Yes.
And it's not enforced. The question is, why isn't it enforced?
Well, that that's an enforcement question, that and that's and that's a valid question, and that's a a concern that the traffic commission uh has. But in addition, the um the whole idea of opening up uh the park on the corner. And uh the and clearing the line of sight when people come up to make the right on on Madison to be able to see down the street. And and that's and and that's the traffic safety aspect of it. Um and I and I think um a hundred and ten feet is is further than is needed for that. And I think we we accomplish both uh both goals by by making sure that that corner stays open. Now, we should, we maybe we should tell the police to. You know, attend to it, you know?
The other thing I've noticed driving there a lot in the last, you know, month is that you're frequently stuck behind a delivery vehicle.
Yeah.
And so maybe there needs to be a better mechanism for figuring out deliveries there. And I, you know, that's a, that's a.
There, there, believe me, there's a lot of issues for that whole thing, but this is, this is fairly specific.
Normally, we don't allow a public to speak.
I'm trying to make things easier for you.
Okay, but yeah, you may, but just. Identify yourself.
Robert Stark, I'm a member of the traffic commission. Um in order to help you with the decision that the traffic commission made, I made a transcript of it. The the transcript of the two or three minutes where the traffic commission discussed the motion to remove the parking. As I look at it, I'm confused by it because it's not clear. I'd like to distribute it so you can actually see what it's very short. It's it's one page. I think it might help you to understand what the traffic commission did, what they decided, what they didn't decide. As they said, if you read it, it's not clear, it's not definitive. It may help you in determining what you need to do.
So you you, okay, you want to give us something big to help us determine what we need to do?
Thanks, Robert.
This was um, this was, this was the part where I um. Uh interrupted the debate and said, let's just send it to the board because it was, it was starting to get a little bit far afield. So uh and and uh so basically, we brought it to the board at my, at my direction. I I I asked Dan to to bring it. So this is. Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't exactly care. Thank you, Bob. Yeah, um uh we we understand, we understand what the situation is. So I I think um my preference would be just to to pull those uh uh pull the parking off that corner. With minimal reduction of of parking spaces.
Old White Plains Road?
Oh, White Plains Road and uh well, White Plains Road is already, it's already um uh, it's already uh no parking. So.
White Plains Road is not no parking. Road has time parking.
Time parking, got it.
Which is not being forced. And I, if we're going to, we won't, we're, we've established that there's a problem with parking. We're portaling, we've established that there's a problem of deliveries. So if you take away the parking, it's no, there's no parking. You said, except for truck, you know, truck deliveries of fifteen minutes or something like that. I think that helps the businesses there and solves the problem that people are concerned about.
It's not a bad idea. Good law, laws with.
Control sheets with the traffic commissioners.
Yes, or by traffic commission. I I think that in summary, the. The issue was the fact that that area on Old White Plains Road and that specific portion of Madison Street is not part of the residential parking program. So there is no timing there and the situation that has arose and evolved over time was the parking in front of Old White Plains Road in front of the store. Historically was not there and it morphed in, so you're able to park to the corner. So what the parking commission requested was the perimeter of the park. So that would leave you making on Old White Plains Road only one missed spot and that would be the perimeter. So that you're only taking away one spot on Old White Plains Road. When you turn to the right, there's already a no parking section there.
Very small, we got ten feet.
So then you come to the back, the base of that, and that's really where the measurement or Mr. On took today. To pull away the four cars to the perimeter of the park, because what occurs is that. That specific area was erroneously left out of the residential parking, so cars aren't there and. Cars are there. Most always without movement. And with that being said, you have cars that are double, triple parking. And that's what's causing the hazard because those cars are not moved off and out of the way. And they're causing the whole perimeter of the park to be flanked, which, which is not indicative or equitable to the balance of the parks in Washingtonville. Our Manchinando Park at one point had parking that flanked it on Plaza and that was removed for the same reason. So it's not the amount, it's not that many vehicles that you're removing. You're only removing one on Old White. And then four would be the perimeter of the park on Madison because there is already a no parking there.
Yeah, I I I, my feeling is four is too many.
Four is too many, yeah. I would say two on Madison. This gives you a site at a park and it it, listen, I I I've lived in enough apartments without parking. And spent half my life driving around this village, find a, find a spot.
Absolutely, I understand that, but we're in a situation where we're overparked there and I I think that. It's giving, it's giving cars the opportunity to stay there. They're there for weeks at a time. And then those cars are double parked, you cannot make the left or right, and then they're bubbled out onto.
I understand your concern.
And it's it's a danger.
I understand.
For safety would be a situation and if, you know. Our parks and and our people patronizing the parks, the safety and the environment is is a, it's a, it's a large parallel concern as well.
You did, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I mean, that that's what I would like to do. I'd like to do two on Madison and then. I'd like, I'd like uh trustee Natchez's suggestion on Old White Plains Road to make that uh. Delivery only.
I think that's a good idea.
Like fifteen minute, uh whatever. We have a delivery area already. We have one on a. On Ward, not on Ward, uh right by Pay, close from where Payless shoe.
There's a, you have a delivery zone on Spencer.
Spencer.
Across from the flower shop.
Right.
Yeah.
Back in the late nineties.
No, it was added in the late two thousands, because I was on the board.
I I also think if we do this and it gets implemented as as quickly as it can, um. There, it can be reevaluated if it's not the right.
Yeah, yeah, always.
I mean, I also think we have to give a directive to the chief that.
Yes.
It doesn't, you know, we're not, if we're not going to enforce it, let's take the signs down.
Hmm.
You know, or we enforce it.
Yeah.
So I think, I think we uh we uh we do what what the the mayor suggested. We we we. Ask the uh police department to pay special attention to the parking regulations on that corner. I would also like to urge that that we we create some sort of ad hoc committee. Or 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 effort to address the parking situation in Washingtonville, because when you have a situation where just the loss of a couple. A couple of parking spots uh sets off a furor. I mean, uh people are are desperate to park. There's there, there, it it it's very, very tight. And and we need to, we need to have some sort of a comprehensive plan, well, a comprehensive, a plan to deal with it in that area. That area is very, very congested. It's it's very difficult to find parking. Uh um no place else in the villages is uh is as uh. Breathe of of parking spaces that people can use and and people live there.
Yeah, Dan, could you come back to us for a new resolution?
Yeah, I'll come back with a new resolution in two weeks, which I give for both the work session and the regular meeting or just the.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Now, I should have a draft in the next couple of days and I'll certainly just to make sure I am interpreting the request for.
And 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 could could we include and examine some some effort to examine the parking situation in Washingtonville?
Um I can, let me talk to our our traffic engineer, Mr. Carboni.
Yeah.
Um and try and uh develop a scope which we can bring back to. Uh you guys and maybe discuss with the traffic commission, just kind of again, make sure we're on the same page um.
Does the residential parking program timeout? I know we had to get permission from the state, so.
That area is included.
I, I was, uh I had. Read the state law incorrectly. It actually does not timeout, but I did. Uh when I was speaking to a set within Otis's office. Last week about the speed limit item and uh we also start talking about. The residential parking system. Uh if that's something you want to look at, I I think that that's fine. Uh one of the things that was mentioned to me. Is the is state legislators simply the transportation committee is becoming a lot more. Data oriented when it comes to these things. Uh for instance, uh they had just. Established a residential parking system in the city of Rye. Uh around uh some of the beaches and uh the legislature of aid in a seven hours his office mentioned, it was a. It was a significant effort to get that set up, much more significant than uh what we looked at, we had to do a couple of years ago. So uh so then we look and I can, again, have uh as well.
Because they need help, they really do. All right, well, we'll look at it again in two weeks. Uh we have a lot of stuff on for tonight. So let's. Work with the. Some rapidity. Uh to a. Mending. April twenty five, April twenty six resolutions to provide funding for first year installation and subscriptions for river gauges on for regular meeting. Now. This is adding another river gauge and also the cost of me. So let me just get this straight. We rent the river gauges for five years. Right? And we have to pay maintenance on them in those five years and we don't own them?
Nope.
Um I I I've had conversations with uh several members of the uh flood mitigation advisory uh committee about this. And um they would like to take a look at the river gauge proposal and see if we can um come up with an, with a. With something that will more more um. Uh neatly fit our needs. Uh I'm I'm not sure that uh that the subscription service is it. Um I'm a little, and I think, and it seems pricey. It seems crazy. I mean, I I I would, Dan, you must have been surprised by this or.
But initial cost.
Initial cost.
This is something that the. There there is first, there is misconception that I have negotiated anything.
Okay, all right.
Uh which I have not.
Okay.
I made calls, I tried to find out more about it and turn that over to the manager's office to have to take care of.
So I think we need to get these folks in here to tell us what, yeah.
An early warning system for the community.
Hmm.
And the that seemed to be the most appropriate uh and one that could be implemented the fastest was river gauge. Which we had before, but we did not have any early warning system with it. So beyond that. Or Jerry met with uh. Uh the people involved, they decided to have added another river gauge, which is fine. Uh and then there seems to be additional costs which. I don't know much about.
Yeah, I mean, my. I've I've kind of soured on this deal. Um given the 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 changing nature of it and I and and a mild amount of research indicates that there are other river gauge options. That we can, we should put out a a uh RFP.
So.
And 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 see if we can get the, get, get a better deal.
We've already agreed to fund most of this, but but now there's a new gauge that's going to go by the Ryne X schools by the, that's the creek, creek.
Yeah, but it's not our gauge, it's their gauge.
And and do we know if somebody's going to be there at three o'clock in the morning uh to call us to say the river's arising? I mean, I do, do we know that? Do we know the?
It it's automatic.
It's not a magic.
The order, if you read it, it automatically goes to the United States Geological Service. It doesn't automatically go to us.
So we're funding, we're funding their research project. In other words, they 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 want, they'll have information that they'll make available to us.
Right.
And and we're we're paying for their equipment to go in our rivers and and we don't get any gauges at it. I don't, I don't see that's a good deal.
Can you for the managers?
Yeah, yeah.
That, that's one of the things that concerned me is that uh. It didn't go directly to us. You know, the 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 USGS thing calls us. Jerry, what do you think?
If you want to have the USGS people show up at the next meeting to talk to you about it, that's fine. All we were asking for is. All we were asking for is to complete the approval of the two hundred eighty six thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars for this. During this entire um contract and I didn't have enough money, so I couldn't sign off on it.
Jerry, you have, can you explain to us how the mechanism works for the early warning system? For the information to get to the residents of the village, which was the whole purpose of this.
I can do that at the next meeting when I learn about it, but I can't do it right now.
Okay.
How about we get the USGS people to tell you how that works?
I I I'd like to know if there are other options to do this. I mean, I'm I'm in favor of doing it in general.
Yeah, absolutely.
But what why, why why do I buy something that's then taken away after five years? I don't even own it. And, you know, and then we're relying on uh somebody else to contact us. Uh, if God forbid, you know, there's a flood that we didn't see coming.
As I understand it, when I asked about this originally. I was told if the inform, if you set, the village sets whatever targets they want for river rising. Okay, when when the gate, when it hits that level, there is an automatic. Signal, if you will, that goes to wherever and sort of like an alarm system goes to the central office. And this person, whatever you've set up.
Mm hmm.
It's uh, you know, uh, that that signal is automatically, not manually, automatically.
Well, Dan, it says it goes to USGS.
Okay, so he he here's what I would suggest.
It's like a central alarm system.
Yeah.
It goes to.
How do I know somebody's there? At three o'clock in the morning? Do you know that?
May I make a suggestion? Man?
No, just what I mean, you you you, do you know that, do you know that? Yeah, do you know that somebody's gonna be there at three o'clock in the morning?
As far as I know, it's the whole thing, what I was told is an automatic thing that is done electronically at the time. And the village sets what it wants as the goal.
You were clear about that, but it goes to USGS. Do I know that somebody's gonna be there at three o'clock in the morning to relay that message to the village? If you read it, it says the information goes to the USGS.
I mean, do we know that someone from the village is gonna be with.
I would I would rather, listen.
Fire department, you said it to the fire department.
We 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 know, we we wait up, wait up. We know when a storm's coming. You know, this isn't, you know. The the this isn't, uh, you know, the seventeen hundreds. You know, we know when there's a, there's a very large potential for a storm. And I'm sure there are many people in the village that could be put on a call list that would be informed. The the fire chief, the police chief, the village manager, the head of DPW.
Okay.
The list goes on and on.
I think we need to know more about how the the USGS gauges work, what the other gauge options are.
Yeah, I think we've gone too far down a road here.
Get the and get the flood mitigation committee to weigh in on it as well.
Yeah, um, uh, and I would, I would like, if if in two weeks, if we can, if the flood mitigation advisory committee can can uh can. Research or or look into options, at least we'll know what we can compare what the USG uh USGS tells us. And and, you know, decide what we want.
Man, what do you mean options? Other, other, other early warning systems or other gauges?
There's other gauges, there's other other gauge systems. I mean, uh, um, uh, and and to be honest with you, we we might want to use those gauges for for something else down the road. If depending on what we do with the dam and the reservoir, so.
Uh, I've I've worked in hundreds of office buildings throughout the city and all over. And many times there is a moisture meter uh in the pits of elevators to let the building engineer know. That the elevator is pulling up with water. Now, uh, uh, so I, the the technology exists. Uh, I don't know if, you know, what what the application would be for rivers, but this isn't rocket science.
What's it, Rology? So what, two weeks and.
Two weeks, let's see, you you gonna talk to the flood committee?
Maybe on the twentieth, so they meet a week from tomorrow.
Tomorrow, so that 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 Dan would, uh, you 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 can. You'll you'll handle that part of it?
I mean, CFT, no, sorry, CFT meets.
I think it's two weeks from tomorrow. The village board is two weeks from tomorrow.
Yeah.
So Jerry, you're gonna talk to USGS and ask them to come in two weeks and explain the how to work and how the early, how the early warning system works. I I assume that you already knew that.
You guys, are you guys okay with the zoom, if they ask to be zoomed in?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I'll talk to, I'll come tomorrow.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, and if and if we don't have alternatives, then we can listen to them and then listen, then then take the alternatives from FEMA.
Flood committee doesn't meet until the twenty seventh, which is the next night we meet.
Okay, great. So then they'll have something to compare it to.
Okay.
But we 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 don't want to sit on this because things are getting delayed. Our our dredging pro- uh program is delayed. Uh, it it's, I'm I'm starting to get anxious that we're not, we're not doing enough.
Let's hold this for next meeting.
It's delayed because of waiting for permits.
Army Corps, Army Corps permit. Because we're dredging more than they are permitted uh without a permit.
Okay. Uh, next up, two B, purchases seven public safety trucks and seven plow assemblies. Jerry, want to talk about this?
It seems like, it seems like uh in two thousand thirteen, we bought a bunch of vehicles that are um. At the end of their useful life. Um, in addition to that, we're replacing a two uh two thousand seven uh Tahoe. That is in the uh is in the schedule of the fire department's equipment. Um, and we're purchasing a vehicle for our new village engineer who will be starting on October third.
Good.
Jerry, months ago, we'd asked, uh, raised the issue of having, you said it would be done, that we would uh track. What the um work is being done on repairs to vehicles so we can better assess uh the useful life of them. Is that, have we been doing that?
Uh, we've been um keeping track of that on paper. We have a program that's not exactly uh up to par. But Lisa in DPW tracks that on paper. These vehicles are getting to the end of their lives, so these vehicles are not uh. Um, useful to us anymore, so.
I think it's not useful. We, you're talking about seven trucks. Is that, what's the total number of our plows? Or seven, eleven, what is it?
Uh, so five of these trucks are replacement, two are new and seven are plows that we're putting on. These vehicles plus additional that we're having, that we had replaced from uh the IDA damage. We had four vehicles replaced that I uh. That were.
They're not snow plows per se. They're just a plow you can add to another truck so that we can get more plowing done.
Correct, so so every, every vehicle pickup truck that's two fifty and above or twenty five hundred and above. Large, uh, you know, heavy duty pickup truck has to have a plow on it. Uh, regardless of who who operates that that piece of equipment so that we can commandeer it during a snowstorm. And then there are uh vehicles that we are um replacing that we lost in IDA that will have new plows on them.
So sure. So how much of this is going to be, um, I guess the red ones are IDA replacement trucks? I can't, I'm not sure.
I, Nora, I, I had a replacement trucks are already ordered. We're just buying four plows for them.
Okay, so it's just the twenty six thousand. Okay, that's just the IDA and the rest. My.
So there's three pickup, there there's the uh three pickup trucks and four service vehicles, four emergency vehicles. And they will be, uh, the three pickup trucks will get plows on them.
And we hadn't anticipated this in the budget, that's sort of.
Yeah, yeah, there's replacement uh cost except for the Harbor Masters vehicle, which he asked for a second pickup truck. Um, there are, there are replacements for every single one of these vehicles in the capital plan.
Oh, okay.
Right, but we still, but one of the rubs is we have this big capital plan, but we haven't actually approved that we we've, you know. We're sort of set with the items on it, but we haven't approved the timing of the spending of the items. And that's something we really need to do because we're, you know, we keep saying yes, but there's gonna be a point where we can't ask anymore. We can't go back to the well.
Well, you might, you might enjoy this because apparently um the staff found uh. What, uh, three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars in committed funds for.
Three fifteen, three fifteen and.
Three fifteen. All the committed funds for a a truck that were, for an excavator that was approved and bought by the board in what year?
It was never, it was never purchased, but there was money sent aside.
But what year?
Fourteen.
November third, two thousand thirteen.
Thirteen.
But the money's in the general fund.
Yeah, no, it's committed.
It's a designated, it's a designated uh fund balance.
So we can transfer that.
Money is in general.
Forgot to buy the excavator.
So we can transfer that to this. Should have led with that.
You know, the other thing, I think, um, you know, everyone is kind of aware, what 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 it means, the trouble that we're all having getting vehicles now.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's, that's another reason why we're looking at.
Now, now, here's the thing, this this is an excavator that we probably should have bought back then to do the. River cleaning that we should have been doing back then, uh, but they just stopped doing everything. And um so maybe that, maybe that money should be used to purchase the excavator it was originally supposed to purchase. Just a thought.
I'll bring that to you in two weeks.
All right.
Oh.
I mean, because the 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 board approved the purchase of an excavator.
Yeah, but if we not had it for the past nine years, I think, I mean, now.
We paid the price. We paid the price in flooding.
Yeah, cleaning the rivers.
So um, uh, so that, I mean, that that that's, but but that's, that's, you know, I mean.
I mean, if we had an excavator, would we be doing our own dredging or would we still be contracting it out with?
We're doing both, I guess.
I I mean.
We don't, we don't, we'll be able to clean the river.
I'd I'd want to do our own because uh um the permit that we're applying to um. The Army Corps is a ten year permit, so if we have equipment, I know we have the talented employees to be able to operate it. Uh, we would be doing it ourselves.
So we can get this permit and we're not required, we can, we can either do it ourselves, provided we have the capability or we can contract it out. It's our permit.
It's our permit for the next ten years is what.
It's not a contracted permit, it's the village's permit, the village.
Correct, Nora, that's correct. It's our permit.
No, I I'm still confused. We're buying seven new vehicles?
Yes.
And and three of them are pickups and what are the rest?
One is a DPW general foreman, one is fire chief vehicle, one is a village engineer vehicle, the other one is parks general foreman. Uh, we're buying a harbor master vehicle, we're buying a pickup truck for the fire department to move around the emergency trailer. And then we're buying plows.
Yeah, looking at the draft resolution, uh, it's three Chevy Tahos. And or uh heavy duty uh LT Chevy twenty five, Chevy twenty five, it's a Muratos. And one heavy duty Silverado, so it's. It's three Tahos, three heavy duty uh uh, no, four heavy duty uh so far.
Four heavy duty what?
It's just three Tahos. Uh, and then four uh Silverados, three of which are uh the uh heavy duty. Uh, LT was a sort of the LT stands for, was just a plate.
Limited.
Limited, okay.
Why do we need a second vehicle for the harbor, for the harbor?
Why? Say it again, I didn't hear it.
Why do we need a second vehicle for the harbor?
Uh, because of all the construction that they do and the fact that um that vehicle, the Harvard Masters vehicle gets tied up. When they're doing uh the dock construction, so we need a second vehicle for them uh to be able to um. Uh, to continue the work that they're doing. In addition to that, that vehicle will have a snow plow, which will be available to us to plow parking lots and streets.
Jerry, just, are any of these vehicles electric?
None of them are electric, Lou. We have issues with electric vehicles giving them to emergency personnel and uh twenty four seven.
Okay.
Because if they run out of electric, they gotta charge for, you know, a few hours and that's not exactly in my emergency response plan.
Understood.
Um, what happened to the previous village engineer's vehicle or the previous vehicle that was dedicated to the village engineer?
It has, it has ninety thousand miles and has been used uh by Kyle to visit all the schools and do all of the um programs that she does outside the MEC.
And she also transports all the bait fish.
I'm just saying.
No, I'm just saying I had to, I had to borrow that one night.
I I think all of them are desirable. I didn't know that we need all of them, but my biggest concern is that we're buying a whole bunch of vehicles at one time in one year. We went into the, they all are used, just gonna have to replace all of them again in one year. We're not spreading them out, which is what we should be doing.
And we haven't been able to purchase vehicles because they haven't been available. The last pickup truck that we purchased was mine. Off of regular contract in twenty twenty and we still have not received the IDA pickup trucks that we placed the order in November of last year. So going on one year now.
Is it, is it possible that even though we're buying seven vehicles, we won't get all seven in the same calendar year?
Yeah, so it says that the at the earliest we'll get is November, but most of them, we've been told by the dealer that will come. They'll get, we'll may get one or two in November, we may get, we'll probably get the others by February of twenty twenty three.
So they're all gonna be basically the same calendar year, the the, maybe not calendar, they're all gonna be the same year and they're all, we're gonna have the situation where they all expire. At the same time.
That, one of these, these are planned replacements and as I know, uh, it's just that the. Timing of getting vehicles right now is crazy.
I understand.
Yeah, we, we are faced and 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 I understand that concern, but we are faced with purchasing two fire trucks this year. Uh, that will cost in excess of two point three million dollars for both trucks.
I understand and that's, that's, we're, we're spending a lot of money and we have, none of this includes that, which is under court mandates. On the shore, what, when this is finishing the phase one of the sewer, we have phase two and phase three. Each one is about five million dollars, is that correct?
No, that's not correct. The first one is five point five million dollars, of which we received a four point nine five million dollar grant. The second one is a two point nine, three million dollar project of which we can go back and apply for some additional grant money. So it's only two phases, not three phases.
Okay, it's on the agenda for tonight.
Thanks, Nora.
Okay, amending uh resolution to correct no parking restrictions on brewery.
Dry drive. Dry lane, it's dry drive.
I can't help that one.
I know, uh, you can sing.
We're uh. But have a problem with this?
No.
I'm okay with it. It's on for tonight.
What, so what happened? We 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 made it, we did some, we didn't do a proper.
The assistant village manager made an error preparing the list.
Okay.
Scripters?
Okay.
We're calling the scripters.
I like when you say script.
Has he been reprimanded?
No. No.
Actually.
I can't, I can't figure out what he, how, what mistake he made, so just let it go with that.
Uh, two D, amending August eighth, twenty twenty two resolution authorizing a replacement of a John Deere Gator assigned to the parks department for regular meeting. So he had a, he had a John Deere Gator and then he didn't, right?
Now you have a Kubota Gator.
Yeah, getting a Kubota.
The, the several, this couple of months, lead time turned to a twelve eighty month lead time.
So this looks.
May I clarify?
Yeah, please.
He wanted a Toro. Service vehicle like a Gator. Uh, there's a nine month lead time. So um. I'm sorry, he wanted a Kubota on state contract. There's a nine month lead time. We were able to find a Toro, same type of equipment, same use, basically same thing, just a different manufacturer. For seven dollars less and we can get that right away.
So we already proved this, this is just proving a different vehicle.
Different vehicle, different brand, different manufacturer.
Okay, so that's on for tonight.
And a seven dollar savings.
Seven dollar savings.
Right, seven dollars here, seven dollars there, before you know it.
Fourteen dollars. Not around here.
Uh, two E, cost savings associated for purchase of crane, funding previously approved on for regular meeting. So we're getting the crane at a better price?
We are. Um, we rented a crane under um our FEMA IDA money for an extended period of time because we kept going in and cleaning the river. The rivers as it was um. As we continued to find more and more um stuff that had washed in there. So the original price of the crane was four hundred and twenty five thousand. We're getting it for three hundred and fifty six thousand dollars because we rented it for a period of time. With FEMA money.
Okay.
Good job.
Thanks.
Phase three of dock replacement Harbor Island, this is for uh, the lumber.
If I could, I want Mr. Signoff, Mr. Sonoff to uh, explain this, he does it so well.
Dan, it's your turn to shine.
Right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, the past two years, the board has uh, approved appropriations for the dock placement at Harbor Island Park. Uh, what we've done is we have uh, purchased the hardware and lumber and performed the manufacturing installation in-house. Uh, the next phase is to complete base three, we've already replaced that forty docks. And uh, this is just moving forward, uh, the lumber is purchased through source book contract. Uh, and we purchased the hardware through whatever contract.
Which docks are being replaced?
I can get the answer for that, I still have the answer.
So the docks look beautiful this year.
I have no problem with docks being replaced, but we're still not being replaced in, in the ADA compliant.
Jerry, uh, the, the statement was made that the docks are an ADA compliant, is that correct?
Well, the, the permit that we have for the docks are to replace them in kind, I'll send that permit to you in a second. I had it ready and I lost the email, I apologize.
But does that mean they're ADA compliant?
We, we only have a permit to replace them in kind.
But if it's a substantial, I mean, depending on how many of them we're doing, we have to be ADA compliant.
That's not what the permit says. The permit says we can't replace them unless you want to do a full-blown replacement, which is okay with me. We are just taking out the existing ones and fixing them up and putting them back.
I understand what you're saying, Jerry, and I'm telling you that is incorrect.
If you want us to, if you want us to upgrade the, the docks to ADA compliant, we can hire a, we can hire someone to start that process. Right now, we're fixing what we have.
Okay, that's what's in front of us tonight.
I just wanna be sure we're not doing enough work that doesn't trigger the requirement for us to be ADA compliant.
They, they know what work we're doing. It hasn't triggered it, but it's really up to the board if they want us to do that. We can certainly do that. We can certainly bring all the docks up to ADA requirements if, if that's what the board wants us to do, we just have to have the consultant on board to do that.
That's not the question I asked, the question I, yeah, I mean.
I, I know, I know what you're asking and, and I'm not. I don't know how to say, but I don't share the concern, um, unless unless you want me to share your concern. For instance, right now, we're just replacing wood and floats on the existing dock portions that we've met. And we're doing it permitted as required. If you want us to upgrade to ADA compliant docks, we can do that. And we can hold off on this and upgrade all of the docks as we want.
What you're saying is right now the work we're doing doesn't require to be upgraded.
Correct, because we received the permit to be, continue to do it up until twenty twenty-five, I think it says on the permit.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Village Justice Court financial statement on for regular meeting, is there anything we need to know about this, is just pro forma New York State?
We've never done, I don't recall ever doing this before.
Well, we've done this before, right?
New York State requesting us.
New York State's request is.
They sent the city ballots and within the backup should be. Courts administration.
Is what we have the full report? So that is what we have been put, put in the package, the full report.
Yes, that's the financial statement.
I only question, there's no recommendation.
Is there a management letter this year?
It says what their responsibilities are.
And it basically.
Appears that there are no issues, no recommendations.
You said it's something from the office of administration?
Yeah, I think it's just.
This is the actual audit.
Yes, it's.
Board that the work was done.
Yeah.
The court has asked to prepare a resolution. Resolution that states that the trustees have looked at this financial statement and are in agreement with it. That has not been sent.
It's not in the backup, I'm just gonna see.
That's the resolution we're going on.
No, no.
Resolution, the actual email, the message we got from the court was not included in the backup.
Yeah.
However, keep in mind, this is not an unqualified opinion, this is a qualified opinion.
That's not the question, the question is.
Please disregard, I throw this entry into question.
Just to explain the difference between a qualified and unqualified. Will you please?
An unqualified opinion is an opinion with financial statements were reviewed and were reasonably assured that, that they presented fairly. Unqualified opinions that there is exemptions noted that the statements may not be presented fairly.
I, I'm delighted that we're doing things correctly, not misunderstanding. But usually, even if you're doing something, doing everything correctly, usually auditors will tell you, say, maybe this is something else you may want to think about, it would be helpful.
If you go to page two, they tell you what the basis for the qualified opinion is?
Done everything correctly.
No, they're saying that we were unable to obtain documentation supporting property of a nine thousand one hundred six record selling difference between the joint bill account ledger and the book cash-based balance. So they're, they're asking us to look into this and to find the differences.
Are you gonna do that over here or is it?
We already went back and we reconciled the justice court's two checking accounts for the last two years. We're currently working on the bail account. We will have that done within the next two months.
Yes, the resolution tonight, we're just saying that we have done the order.
Yes.
Where does this go? And my question is, why is this required? Can we get the backups? I don't know where this is heading. We do, we're doing what we need to do.
Yeah, I think it's just a requirement.
That's what I mean, because our requirement is, it must be a reason for. That's why I want to know, because I've never, we've never done this.
No, and that.
Does this go to the state? Where does this go? We're passing a resolution that's.
It goes to the office of court administration.
We don't. Whereas New York State.
What is all, and this is a solution to, so. We'd be good to see the requirements because now, okay, now I understand this is sending this is really sending the request to the.
Yeah. My justice court, just my court records of an audit, and said that, and that said, audit was conducted and noted in the minutes of the.
So the key is.
You're, you're, what you're doing is you're noting that, not it was prepared and it was, you're noting it in the minutes.
What I'd like to see is why we're doing this, I mean, the uh, instructions or the letter or whatever the court administration has now asked us to do this different, or this time, or the first time, I probably will need to continue doing it, but where does this come from?
I believe the letter was sent to me and I gave it to you guys.
Yeah. We saw.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So basically, we've got to balance their books.
Here's the letter. We'll send it to you. It's easy to read.
Oh, Sally sent it already.
Yes, that's.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you, Sally.
I'm gonna read it aloud because we're talking about this in public, you know. Jim Mayor Murphy, uh, section twenty nineteen A of the Uniform Justice Court requires the town and village justices annually provide their court records and dock, dockets to their respective village auditing board and that such records then be examined and that fact be entered into minutes of a local board's meeting. The Unified Court Systems Internal Audit Service Office is responsible for monitoring town and village board compliance in section twenty nineteen A. Accordingly, I'm requesting you provide a copy of the audit of your local court's record for the fiscal year ending in twenty twenty-two. A copy of your board resolution acknowledging the required examination was conducted. Please email the reports and resolution. So there's an email address, uh, da, 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 if you have any questions, and then as a contact number. And that's it.
So we're inserting a whereas that says, whereas pursuant to the letter, such and such, the village is required to, to such and such. Now, now everything is clear. Maybe within the first and the second, I have a whereas clause. Just noting what the letter is asking us to do and acknowledging that letter, so then now everything makes sense. You can have that to the regular if you want to pass this.
You have to send the uh, audit, the actual audit as well.
Yeah.
Yes, as in resolution.
We'll do that, and then everything will be clear.
It's not, you know, this was something, whereas uh, the village.
Pursuant to a request, could you, could you work on it then?
Yeah, yeah.
And email it to us.
Yeah.
Thanks.
You want a copy of the letter?
Um, I, I have it.
Okay. Leave it to your capable hands. On for a meeting, uh, street closure request, spooktacular Halloween parade and turkey trot.
No one, oh.
Forgot the uh, needling. What was that? H? Yeah, I'm, I'm doing the on for regular meetings first.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
Uh, street closure request for spooktacular parade and turkey trot.
Sure.
It's on for a good meeting, everybody's okay with that, right?
Mayor, that's not until the next meeting.
Okay.
September twenty-seven.
Okay. Thank you, Sally. Uh, inter municipal agreement uh, with Westchester County for CDGB funding. This is pro forma, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, on for regular meeting. Uh, engineering and design proposal for replacement of Tompkins Avenue Bridge. People will be happy to hear that.
Well.
Jerry, we'll talk about that.
No, not really. Dan will talk about it.
Sure. Um, well, congratulations on reopening Billson Avenue Bridge. It's time to kind of move on to that, which is Tompkins, which uh, as most members of the community know was.
Been out for a year now.
Yeah, been out for a year now, it was damaged by Hurricane Ida. Uh, we have been talking with FEMA for the better part of the last year. Uh, recently, they confirmed that we can move forward with the design to replace it. Uh, what we are seeking to do is to replace the bridge in a fashion that complements and answers the benefits of the Army Corps project, similar to what is being done, what was done with Hillside Avenue was also being done with Wearyly Avenue Bridge by the Town of America. Uh, so we're going through that process and uh, we received the proposal from H V A. Uh, they are the firm that did the design for Hillside Avenue, they're also working with the Town of Marinerick on Wearyly Avenue. And they will be working with the Town of Raleigh on the Arden Creek Bridge. Uh, they're, they're pretty familiar with, with bridge replacements. I think uh, we've been satisfied with how Hillside turned out and I think the two towns are honestly pretty happy with it because they chosen to use H V A for their own bridge projects. Uh, the, I mean, did it, I think the uh, design proposal is actually ten point eight percent of the projected budget, which was somewhere around four million, three hundred thousand dollars, which is similar to what we just paid for Hillside Avenue.
So how much is she repaying for this?
Uh, we are hoping one hundred percent. That's, we've been working with them on to get them to uh, pay for our project. Because it is replacement of a piece of infrastructure damaged by hurricane.
We, we couldn't bring this to you until we had the approval from FEMA to move forward. And once we did, that's why, that's why.
As soon as I got the email saying you can do it, I immediately asked.
My understanding is that they, they, their pro forma approval is to replace what was there, right? And, and we didn't want to do that.
Yeah, they, basically, what they want, they, they're, right, the pro forma is incime replacement. Well, uh, we know that uh, incime replacement has no flood mitigation benefit for the Village of America. Uh, I actually asked uh, the Army Corps about that last February and they provided uh, February is in February of twenty twenty-one, prior to Ida, not February of this year. And they provided some design guidance as to how it should be replaced. And that's what I'd be looking to, to.
Well, and also the Army Corps didn't anticipate replacing that bridge as part of their plan because it was gonna be our obligation to replace it anyway.
Yeah, the, the bridge is outside of the project area.
Yeah.
But, you know, just barely, but they, they said it's, you wanna replace it in a way that works with what we're trying.
So i- in a way, it's kismet, I guess, right?
Uh, I, I don't want to say that, but you know, if, if, if we're able to uh, you know, get this bridge replaced at a, in a fashion that minimizes the impact to the taxpayer. Uh, that, that's something we'd like to do.
Sounds good. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Uh, hosted every safety improvement project.
But, yeah, this is the grant that we received, uh, the, the TAP grant, Transportation Alternatives Program. Uh, we had a kickoff meeting with the state DOT in August. Uh, and they have sent along the master project agreement for this project, uh, which we need to execute before we can uh, begin the, any, any design. It's a four million dollar, essentially a four million dollar grant, uh, and we're responsible for a twenty percent match, so. Where it works, I'm, I'm excited about this. I think everyone uh, is gonna be excited and hopefully realize a nice project.
Have any problems or concerns?
Yeah.
Uh, serving alcohol at a concert in Harbor Island Park. What?
Hillside. Oh, that's December my seventh.
Now you're right, Hillside Avenue Bridge.
It's on for two weeks then.
It's opposite way, most whip it out now. Uh, Hillside Avenue Bridge, uh, over Marinerick replacement. Additional funding for construction inspection, construction administration service, and I bet this is you again.
Yeah, I, we uh, uh, are, are from, uh, who's, from construction inspection, construction administration, again, uh, H V A. Uh, because the duration of the project has extended longer than originally anticipated. Uh, they've asked for, uh, requested additional funds for the, for their work. Um, in terms of the uh, rationale behind the request, um, you know, part of it is the fact that uh, we weren't able to begin this project in a timely fashion uh, during calendar year twenty twenty-one. Not because of anything that the village, the contractor or the engineer did, but, you know, we were waiting a very long time for the requisite approvals from the New York State Department of Transportation. As I mentioned, uh, when we had our original kickoff meeting, they told us we had thirty months in which to complete this design and be ready to award, award a project. Uh, we would have been able to do that and we would have been able to start actually probably in twenty twenty. In the spring of twenty twenty, but because the state uh, needed additional time to do what they needed to do. Uh, we weren't able to be in a position to actually award anything for forty-eight months. So that delayed this eighteen months and then obviously, uh, we were looking to begin the project uh, September ninth of last year, uh, but uh, fate intervened and uh, the area was heavily impacted by Hurricane Ida. Uh, you know, equipment that had been staged was destroyed and if anyone was down in that area post-Ida, it was it was a difficult area to be in and get around and. it was a difficult area to be in and get around and work. So that delayed the project, and then, uh, there were some, uh, pretty heavy rainstorms that, uh, impacted the site and added time to the constructions. Uh, we believe it is a rational request. Uh, we have already asked, uh, the, what, uh, the county for additional grant monies uh, to help fund this project, and the request that we made, uh, was looking for additional one point two, one point three million dollars of funding and incorporated this as part of that request.
Okay. But paying this isn't contingent on getting the county.
Correct. And I, I had, I thought they were gonna, um, uh, act on this tonight, but I don't think that's the case, that that being the county. On the grant.
Is this our obligation? Because I know that we were.
So this would be a tri municipal obligation.
Okay, so the hundred and nineteen thousand dollars.
Is, is really, is really thirty?
Eight.
Thirty-eight?
Right, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
That's good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, serving alcohol at a concert in Harbor Island Park. Uh, the emerald is putting on a, a diversity concert on September twenty-fourth. Uh, and I think they'd like to sell beer and wine, uh, to defray the cost. But are you okay with that?
Gangster grants, right?
Yeah. Everybody's okay?
Yeah.
All righty. Uh, zoning board of appeals matter eight eight six Oriente, uh, is on for a regular meeting as a supplemental legal costs association would appeal a building in part determination to issue a building permit. Jerry, you're asking for ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, the original call, the original estimate is five. We're just covering it, so we don't have to go more.
Okay.
Well, all it is, is putting some money aside for this.
But don't we have?
Item that wasn't anticipated.
But don't we have money in the account with our land use council? Well, I don't know why we, or we've already dipped through that whole thing in this year, this calendar year?
No, but this is something above and extraordinary, um, not something that we, uh, would have anticipated around budget time.
But I don't know why we wouldn't just see how the retainer goes and add money when we are, when we've completed, I mean, did the, that when we've spent the retainer, or we're getting close to spending the retainer.
Well, we, we usually, you know, like to make sure that we, 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 we do all the stuff with the budget, right? Uh, when we're doing the audit of the bills, you know, moving, moving money around to pay for, you know, what we used to do to reconciliation at the end. So it seems like you're saying now do the reconciliation at the end.
No, I'm just saying, we typically do budget trans, I mean, this is very early into the budget. We typically do budget transfers when the funds are needed, and that line doesn't need funds right now. I mean, it's, 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 it's an obligation. We have an obligation um, to pay the bills of our attorneys.
Right.
And we have a mechanism for doing it, so.
We're, so our obligation here is we're, we're paying for other people's appeals. What's going on?
We don't, uh, Tom, I think that it's pretty clear that legally, but that's the, that is, that's what New York State requires.
I, I, I don't know if that's true, Nora.
I think it's pretty true. It's just been discussed by this board and by a previous.
Yeah, I, I don't know if that's true.
Okay, I think it is true.
Yeah.
But anyway, uh, my question is, you know, why are we putting, you know, we usually wait until we actually need money in an account?
Did it hurt to do it?
I don't know why we're doing it.
The reason, the reason we brought this to you is because typically it would be a charge against the escrow, but in this case, we can't charge anyone's escrow. We can't even ask for escrow. So we're making sure that there's money in the, uh, in the account to cover these costs, which should be, or let's put it this way. Would be best if it was escrow, but it's not. We're not allowed to do that.
So, so we're providing the escrow money that these, um, appealers, uh, were not required to put up? Is that it?
Yeah.
The money.
Yeah, okay.
We have a history in this village that is not okay, that we don't do that.
Yeah.
But regardless, there's money in the account now to be able to handle legal bills.
The, most, most of the billing that's done by the land use attorneys, as, as was pointed out to me, is done by the escrow. Is that right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Right, so there, there.
The large majority of it, in this case, the, this appeal, there's no, there's no way for us to, to collect escrow. We have to pay for it out of village fund.
Um, but we have funds in the, in that account. The, this also raises the issue of, of a memo we got from the village attorney asking us to revise our escrow law with regards not to this kind of an escrow account, but to an application. And I think, um, you know, we haven't discussed that. I think we should, and I think it's a confidential memo. I don't think it should be a confidential memo. I think this might be the time to discuss it.
Well, put it on an agenda and discuss it then.
Well, it's disgusting. I mean, we're, we're already discussing escrow.
Well, it doesn't say escrow in here.
They're funding, okay, we're funding third-party appeals.
Yeah.
Basically, Jerry's saying we don't have escrow, so he wants to put extra money in an account that has money to cover those costs.
That's why we need to fund this third party.
Question is, do you want the sunny agenda?
I, I don't see the logistics, but the, the logic of it.
But we know that this was not an anticipated normal legal expense. It's not normal at all. And.
There have been many such appeals in this village.
Mm-hmm.
Including the one about Ralphs, and this isn't how it was funded. So, I mean, you know, I, I just, we don't typically add money to an account when the account or a line doesn't need it, and that's what I think is unusual.
Okay, the question is, is there consensus to put this on? Well, I, I, I see no reason. It doesn't hurt. Nora doesn't want to, so you two have to decide.
I'm trying to understand this. I, I, I see the resolution. It's trying actually to, to bring money from the appropriated fund balance of three, three thousand. And it'll go to village attorney contractual services. If I open village attorney contractual services based on the expense report we have today, we are the budget line was fifty thousand. And we are we barely used it, probably, right? Because, because we've been different from the previous contracts, most of our money now is coming from retainers. And so actually, it's, 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 uh, and we've had this in the book. I, I don't think this is, I, I don't understand. We've never done this before since I've been here.
There've been occasions where, early in the fiscal year, uh, we've had an unanticipated expense that we, uh, the board did fund. An example I can think of is a couple of years ago, uh, with the Taylor's Lane saga, I'll call it at this point. Uh, the state had asked us to do additional testing for, I think it was, uh, PFOAs, uh, it was, uh, I think it was maybe June, July, or August. Uh, and we had to get a proposal from, uh, our, our consultants, I think it was fifteen thousand dollars. And at that point, the board transferred money from the contingent line to the village engineer's budget to pay for that expense, which was unanticipated at, when we prepared the budget, because yeah, the state just said, by the way, we're giving you the opportunity to do additional work that we, you never contemplated having to do.
And in essence, we do that all the time with the budget amendments that we approve every night.
Yeah, when we need them. This isn't about.
No, no, no. What, what, but refresh your memory. What used to happen is, this was all reconciled at the end of the year in, in each department. And then you said, no, no, we want to see it.
But I said I wanted to see it before the line gets diminished. I mean, this is, this is, this is very early in the budget for this kind of a transfer.
We, we move money, uh, we're moving money tonight from, uh, you know, the, uh, the, uh, marine education from one line to another line, which hasn't been spent yet in anticipation of it. You don't wait until you spend it. Listen, if there's not a consensus, there's not a consensus. Let's move on. What I'm asking is, is there a consensus? And apparently I don't hear one. You know, that, there should be a fee or some, you know, you should not get this gratis. It should not be on the taxpayers' ten thousand dollars.
So I.
To, to finish, Nora, please let me finish the sentence here. It, it, it's so unfair that the taxpayers continually have to foot the bill for this. It, it's, it's just. Well, why don't you explain what we're talking about?
So I, so I think that, I think, Tom, you had something on the agenda that you had asked to taken off because you wanted to change our policy so that we would charge people who make what's sometimes called a third-party appeal. It's somebody who challenges.
I, I, I took it off the agenda because the last time we talked about it, there wasn't a consensus to move it. So that's what should happen.
But, but, but that's, that's, today, we're not talking about that. We're talking about that, that if anybody makes one of those appeals, there wants to be a discussion about transferring money to an account that doesn't need it.
That appeal.
But to an account that doesn't necessarily need it. I think the, and I think, you know, the argument about whether or not, I think by law, and, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of research on this, and this has been, this was a topic of a previous board. I think this board even discussed it. We don't have the ability to charge people for the costs when, when a member of the public challenges the building inspector. And in, and in part, it's because you don't want to be in a situation where somebody gets a permit that could harm a neighbor, and there's no recourse for it. And one of the situations is Ralphs, and that cost the village a tremendous amount of money.
But in, but in this instance, they, they are not neighbors. They're not even neighbors. They don't live anywhere near it.
It's somebody who might, somebody who might.
Vigilantes.
Well, you, you know what? This, we should not be dipping in. My other concern is, this is a, this is, this is very personal. If people are talking about very specific cases of this, and this should be more antiseptic. It's a, it's about whether or not we have the ability to charge applicants to make a third-party appeal, which I do not think we do. And I don't really think we should be discussing a specific third-party appeal because we should not be dipping into the zoning board's business.
No, 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 Nora. The, the, the zoning boards make their own determination. This is about, you know, an, an appeal that was brought by two people known well to us, Village of Mamarone Democratic District Leaders, uh, on a property that neither of them have bought or are anywhere near. And, you know, it's costing the taxpayers a lot of money. If you don't want to, you know, move the money, fine, but, you know, it, that doesn't take it away, that this is going to cost the taxpayers upwards of ten thousand dollars. And that, to me, is a real shame. And, uh, it, it's not the way, you know, you, you, you weaponize the zoning board and you weaponize the code against people that, you know, you, you, you have disagreement with. And it, to me, that's not the purpose of zoning, and that's not the purpose of, you know, good land use. But be that as it may, uh, there isn't a consensus to move this forward. Uh, FEMA's recommendations regarding Mamarone Reservoir Dam on for regular meeting. This is exciting. Are you excited?
Yep, I'm excited.
This was something that, you know, originally been kicking around for a long time, but, uh, it was really the inspiration of it is, uh, Mr. Bernie Camarda, who has been, uh, pushing for this. And what this will do is wait, this is for the damn sake?
Yeah.
Is this the resolution? Hold on, hold on. Let, let me just get this straight. Okay. This is, is this to ask the county?
Both.
The study?
Both.
Oh, it's both, okay.
Both. Text the county to help us defray the cost of the EA and to, uh, uh, give us money for the planning and engineering study to enhance the Mamarone dam and reservoir um, a- as the FMAC asks for.
And at the request of the county executive.
And this is both.
Who was at the, uh, here attended the meeting?
In addition to that, we had legislator Parker, uh, when we talked about funding the EA. Which she and the assistant commissioner of planning agreed would be a request. So we're combining the two requests and making it one request so that the, so that the CE can, uh, take a look at it, you know, in, uh, in total.
Okay. I'm fine with having the sun in regularly.
Yeah, it's an amazing offer, Mayor.
It's an offer I can't refuse, Jerry.
No, can't refuse it. I won't.
And it's a, there's a fifteen, fifty million dollar pot of money there. Let's grab it all we can.
They're good people. They, they, they know we need help, and they come, they come bare and get, so.
It's, you know, my grandma used to always say, when you go to somebody's house, make sure you got to knock with your elbows.
Yeah.
Uh, let's go back.
Reminder, I'm sorry, um, this needs to be added to tonight's regular meeting agenda because it came in after the agenda was posted, but you all have the resolution.
Okay, thank you, Sally.
Thank you, Sally.
So, you don't, don't be shy about reminding me tonight. Okay? Uh.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm writing it down.
All right, let's go back to new business. Hold on a second.
Yeah.
Requesting the Westchester County remove center of Buckman from the Needle Lane Valley Place Sewer Bridge. Who owns this bridge?
Washington.
Didn't they just rebuild it?
No, they, um, they removed the wing wall.
Yeah.
Which jutted out into the Mamarone River.
So if they removed the, the, the middle of Buckman, what holds it up? I don't understand.
Magic.
So asking to remove the middle of what, basically meaning replace and hold bridge?
Yeah.
If I may, I asked this to be put on the agenda. This came after, um, George Latimer came to the FEMA committee and said, if you have projects, put it on a letterhead, send it to us. The county has money. We're doing our budget now. It, it, it's ripe for being reviewed and be funded. So this, what happened is, on the Needle Lane Bridge, the county was supposed to replace the whole thing originally. They took out the wing wall and decided to wait till after the core project was done to see what else they would do. This is a perfect opportunity where the county says that they have money that if we ask for it, they will consider it. Doesn't mean they'll fund it. But if we don't ask for it, we don't have, we lose that, we lose a window to try and get money for something that has been very contributory, contributing, uh, thing to what's happened in flooding. Uh, the container that we had got caught in the Needle Lane Bridge, uh, it helped with the backup. Uh, the bridge gets caught there. It adds, adds the backup. Uh, that, that's one of the big issues that we have. So one of the things is, we can ask for, the worst that can happen, the worst scenario is, they say, sorry, we don't have money, or we don't, we don't like the project, or we don't want to do it. It's their bridge, and they're supposed to be doing it. And, uh, it's, with everything that's going on, we're trying to push the water out faster, and this is going to be one of the last obstacles to create more flood.
What does, uh, Omicor say about that bridge? Dan, do you know?
Um, I, I think they recommend that it be replaced in the center of Buckman, moved.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, I attached some documentation from a couple of years ago about that, and the county chose not to do it at that time. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dan. I believe when this, this was done, the county said that they were going to be removed, they were removing it, and therefore the court did not fund it.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and so that did not happen. They only took out, you know, part of it. They did not do the whole thing uh, because they ran into shipo, uh, and decided, well, let's just wait and see. And we had, since the, the county has money, they're doing the budget now. Uh, George just said, it doesn't hurt to ask.
Well, I mean, this is exactly what he said to the, to the Club of Negation advisor. Exactly the same.
On both items, on both classes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. All right. So what, why don't, Dan, sort of, why don't you prepare a resolution for two weeks?
Well, can, my question is, can we add it to the resolution? The FEMA resolution is in on the dam. We just can add it as another, you know.
No, let's just add it to the county, let's just send it to the county.
Yeah, I, I don't think we want to make it sound like we.
Yeah.
The only concern is they're, they're, but they're in the middle of the budget process now. You don't get it, you know, George was very clear, don't get it to us at the end of September. Do it now.
We don't have a resolution.
So, um, yeah, we don't want to hold up that other resolution. So why don't we, why don't we prepare a second resolution and send it over?
That's a good idea. Second resolution at the end of the month could work.
Yeah, well, can we do it sooner than that? No, I'm going to text George.
You have to approve it. You can't do it sooner than that.
The only way we could do it sooner than that is if we added a sentence to this resolution. And then we wouldn't discuss it at our next work session. But I don't know.
Well, I don't want to put it on the same level as dealing with the, yeah, as a foreigner, Dan. That, that's a completely different.
Well, why don't, if, if, if in fact it helps with their budget process, why don't we have a, you know, a short meeting to prove it, get a, you know, have an extra.
I'm texting George right now and tell him we're going to do it at the end of the month.
How about this? Can we authorize the village manager to make the request for us and do a resolution in two weeks? That way they get a letter on letterhead.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Because that's all, all George really asked for was a letter. He didn't ask for a resolution.
Yeah, but, but you're, you're asking the village manager to do something you haven't voted on.
Well, we can, we can add it to the agenda to vote on it, to authorize the manager.
I, I mean, it seems like, you know, anything we can do to push flood mitigation along should be on our list.
Who, what did the flood committee say about it?
Well, the flood committee didn't, it's not even on the flood committee's, uh, written.
Didn't talk about it?
Oh. Well, Dan, you were there. Did they, did they talk about it?
They, they talked about it. They were concerned about doing the dam.
Yeah.
Dam resolution. That, that was their priority.
So it's FMAC's priority absolutely is the dam and the reservoir. Well, I don't want to mess with the resolution.
Yeah, I don't want to put this resolution. Let's just do a separate resolution.
I'm happy, I'm good with a separate resolution. I think we could do that in two weeks. We could ask Jerry to just do a formal letter saying this is something we agreed to. I, I will say that, you know, I mean, I was on the flood mitigation committee, you know, when the Army Corps plan finally got approved and, and by Washington and it, the, there was anticipation that this bridge would be rebuilt without the wind wall and without that center abutment by the county, because the county had scheduled to do it, and then the county didn't remove that center. So I think the Army Corps simply didn't put it in the plan because they thought the county was going to be doing it.
Yeah, I think the Army Corps removed several bridge replacement projects from the project. With the understanding that the communities would take care of those projects themselves.
I think, I think part of what it did that too was to get under.
Yeah.
Yeah, to increase the water.
Yes.
Yeah.
So all we're really basically doing is asking the county to do what they, that they had said they were going to do originally. You know, and again, the worst they can do is say no.
Oh, no, I understood that. I, I, I just don't, I, I just don't want them to think it is.
Do it in a proper order. We'll do it in two weeks.
We made the window by doing that.
You're not going to miss the window, Dan.
It's just not as important as the reservoir and the dam, that's all.
It's what I've been, we were told by George.
Yeah.
He was very clear about that.
Well, we're putting this on definitely for two weeks.
Yes.
And I think we should all let George know that we are in full support of this.
I already did.
Speed limit, man.
Yeah. So it's a good idea.
FEMA wanted the dam to be considered first, because that's my understanding.
Yeah, FEMA was, was, was quite adamant about not adding anything else to it. I mean, at least I was watching the meeting. I wasn't participating, so that's what I heard. I mean, Dan, I'm right about that, right?
Yeah, we have the email in the, in the backup saying that. Yeah.
I mean, Dan brought this up at the, at, at the meeting, and, and they were, they were not, they were not interested. So.
Okay, we'll do it in a separate one, in two weeks. We'll get the one, then we'll bang with you. Okay. Lowering village wide speed limits to 25 miles per hour. When I first became mayor, I asked our representatives in Albany if we could lower speed limits to 25 miles per hour like they did in New York City. New York City passed a law lowering all speed limits to 25 miles an hour. And what I got back was that the Department of Transportation of New York State was not in favor of that, so it was a real tough lift. So they wouldn't allow you to blanket. So what we did with the help of our old friend Greg Cutler, is we changed the speed limit, not on every street, on every street that wasn't a cul-de-sac or a dead end. You could still go 30 miles an hour down your cul-de-sac if you can get up the speed. But every other street that we controlled, we changed to 25 miles per hour. But this now, if I read it correctly, allows us to change to 25 miles per hour, even in streets that are Westchester County streets and the New York State streets.
That's where.
That's where I read it. So I'd like to consider a, a law, just blanketly stating that the speed limit in the Village of Mamaronek is 25 miles per hour.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, and that this, you know, it, it, it saves lives. It just does. You know, Shannon Purdy was in here years ago and explained the difference between getting hit at a certain speed and getting hit at a lesser speed, and it's basically life or death. So, Mark, if you and Bob could prepare some kind of law like that, so we could look at it in two weeks?
Create for the first meeting in October.
All right, yeah.
About that time, Bob.
Fair enough. Thank you. Well, first meeting in October, okay? All right, thank you. I, I really appreciate the support on that. I think it's very important. With the kids going back to school now.
We just got through our hologen.
We got to put a hologen?
Got to the hologen.
Well, I make a motion to break the sustenance. I'll see you all back here at eight o'clock.
I think we should celebrate.
Be at eight o'clock.
I made a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye. Congratulations.
I think you see the email from Danielle at the Westchester.
Oh, you have them, okay.
I have them here, so.
Yeah. God, the police are here.
Oh, finally.
Oh, we can begin now.
No, sorry.
We're just waiting for you. Problem. Ready? So you ready?
All set to go.
Okay. Good evening, and welcome to the 8:00 PM September 12th Village of Maric, regular board trustee meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I. United States of America, into the Republic which stands one nation on the ground, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion to open it.
So move.
Second.
All in fair. I'd like to point out that there are emergency exits on my right and on my left. If, well, those of us with a cellphone, if you would just please silence it. And the first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
We'll be cool.
Trustee is young.
Yes.
Sanchez. Lucas.
Yes.
The four.
Yes.
There were no public hearings. First item is communication to the board. So let me explain to the audience before we get going in. I'm not trying to stifle anybody. If you're here for the parking on Old White Plains Road in Madison, we discussed that tonight at the work session. We are going to be removing some parking on Old White Plains Road in Madison. There were a couple of different ideas that went back and forth. So that item is not on our agenda tonight to be approved. We are going to revisit it in two weeks. That being said, communications aboard the micro. So just before we begin, there's a five limit, five minute time limit on all speakers. No exceptions will be made. I'm sorry to have to do that, but because of the antics of a few, that happened. So please.
Everyone. I want to talk about the solution for the study for the dam for the.
And if you would, might please state your name.
Bernie, come on about 904 mouth.
Thank you, Bernie.
I want to talk about the dam, the resolution for the study for the dam for flood control. I'm asking the board, please don't vote no. Because, because we need a broader study for the dam. Because anything, anything downstream from the dam is part of the Army Corps of Engineers project. And it's, and it's part of the engineer project, and it needs to be presented to the ACE as a tweak, anything from the dam downstream. Anything from upstream is part of the county's responsibility for the, for the rest of war. Please don't, please don't vote no, because we need more information. You guys need more information, because that's the purpose of the studies, to get more information. Please don't vote no, because, because you think it's going to cost more money, and it's going to put a burden on the taxpayers of Maric, because the state and, and the county want to help us financially. As you all know, I mean, you mentioned it, that George Latimer called, and he called up the, the flood mitigation meeting, and was willing to help us get this study done and, and help Maric to do this dam. And if we wait on this, it's actually going to cost the taxpayer more money, because there's a window to get on the budget, on the county budget, and we need to do this ASAP to get on the budget. And we need to write a letter, he needs a formal letter. And if we wait and we don't get on it, it's just going to cost us more money. I'd like to thank George Latimer, because he's, he's always, he's, he's helping us. I'd like to commend him, he's helping us. I'd like to commend Catherine Parker too, because I believe she's behind this too, on, on trying to help us. So I'd like to tell them thank you. We need to vote yes on this, because we need parallel mitigation. The Army Corps of Engineer, after this project is completed, some of us are still going to get flooded. And we, we need parallel mitigation. We need, we need to vote yes on this, because this dam is going to protect us from the upstream municipalities that this water comes from, and it, it dumps in, and it inundates our waterways. So we need this, and it's, it's, you know, and it's, and it's, it's, it's a Class C dam, and it's an endangerment if this dam fails, and this thing opens up, you know, we could have loss of life, and and we just, we, we, we need it. We need this dam for the. Thank you.
Just so you know, Mr. Kamala, the intention is to add that item to the agenda, and I can't predict, but I would bet very strongly it passes tonight. Thank you very much.
And, and as a resolution rather than just a letter.
Yeah. Anyone else, please?
Well, I did it 506 Hill Street, Maric, New York. I hope you all had a wonderful summer. It was a little hot, but very enjoyable. Anybody who is here on the parking, just because they don't have it on the agenda, well, this would be your time to come up if you want to speak your mind, if you already made the trip here. A couple of things. Once, once again, I'll do it every meeting. Flood mitigation. I encourage this board to increase the allowable height of residences in the flood area of the Village of Maric. It should be a simple resolution. If you wish to raise your house 15 feet, we will add 15 feet to the maximum allowed of, of your house. When you raise your house, half the area under the house has to be in previous surface. You can't change the footprint of the house unless you go to the Board of Appeals. And if you decide to lower and close, you lose the variance that you have on the height of the home. That whether it, it is feasible financially should be the decision of the homeowner, not for the village, but that should be an option given to the village, to the homeowners, to at least help some people get out of the flood zone. You've spoken a couple of times on the subject of a couple of residents who are making an appeal to the building inspector. And you make, you know, heavy reference, oh, it's going to cost the village money. The problem, if you turn around and charge residents, is that your lower middle income residents then have no recourse if they wanted to challenge a building inspector decision. And in fact, what you're doing is letting wealthy residents who can afford to pay to be able to challenge a building inspector decision. But for those who. But for those who are lower and middle class, you are absolutely shutting them out from any recourse if they feel that the building inspector has made a poor decision. And while it costs the village money, I think it's well worth it for the protection you give to every single residence if they disagree with the decision that the building inspector made. On the budget, again, we have a lot of items today and everything. I once again encourage this board, you have to sit down and figure out how you're paying for items. I said, I know you can, you know, I saw, you know, that, hey, we can bond up to, you know, $270 million. It doesn't mean that you want to bond up to $270 million. If you bonded another $40 million, you'd be raising everybody's tax in this room 10%. You have to see where, 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 how you want to fund each project, how each project may have grant money, or may have state aid, or may have FEMA money. You have to start to look at the timing of the projects, because you may wind up with a cash flow project, a cash flow problem. If all these projects come in at once, remember, we're already floating a dam for $5 million. Are we going to get the mon, uh, the bridge for $5 million? Are we going to get the money back for Hillside Bridge? Absolutely. But until it's done, Dan Smith's paperwork and the state hands us a check, we have to float that money. We have a big grant coming for, for the sewer work. But until the sewer work is done, the paperwork's put in, we get the grant, or we get bonds, we have to float that amount of money. Now you're adding on dredging. Now we have Village Hall, which we've already spent $700,000 on. We're budgeted for $2.8 million. And now, if you look at all the resolutions that you have on today's agenda, that's $2.4 million. You have to look and see exactly what you can afford, where your cash flow is. Do we have to, do we have to raise fees? Do we have to raise taxes? Do we have to bond? Probably all of the above, but at some point, you have to address those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, let me ask you a question. Sorry. The village's liquidity, is it stable?
Yes.
Plenty of cash on hand?
We have cash on hand, and we do cash management every month. If there's a clear endangerment of not being liquid, we could issue a short term debt.
Yeah.
To make us liquid.
So we, we, we have had no problems or no issues?
No problems, no issues. And we're forecasting right now, we're good through November. Thank you.
State your name for the record, please.
My name is James Abadi, 170 Washington Street. One's a suggestion, and the other ones are concern. There is a empty, well, there's a parking lot that's on Plaza and Waverly. There's construction here now. I know Jerry had mentioned the village might try to purchase it. Maybe instead of using it for village equipment, maybe they can use that for residential parking somehow, maybe charge, get their money back for purchasing it. But it would be a place for people with all the overcrowding and parking, that they may be able to park their cars there. Just a suggestion, something to look at. My other concern is, you know, I drive around the village like everyone, and you're trying to get a parking space, and it's crazy, it's almost impossible sometimes. You drive around two or three times, four times. And then I go in the back of Arcadia, and we have the village parking lot, and there's like 10 box trucks, commercial vehicles parked there. It's the same across from the old house of Honda, Bob's Honda. There's commercial vehicles there. I don't know, like, if somebody allowed that, or if they're paying to be there. But, you know, if I was a business owner in the village, I would be upset. But I'm also, you know, a resident and a taxpayer, and I'm driving around, I could never get a space. And you got a lot of people, you know, trying to get, get parking to help these businesses survive, and there's no parking. And I don't think it's fair. I don't, you know, I, I had my business on my commercial truck, and I got rid of it. It's not allowed in my driveway. I don't know why we're using it in village parking. Those parking spaces should be used for the businesses of the village. I mean, that's what they were created for, I'm almost positive. And all yet, you got all these box trucks and gardening trucks using them for business, they, at the end of the day. And some of them don't even go outdoor in the day. So, you know, it's, it's, it's one of my concerns, because I don't understand why it's allowed. It shouldn't be, it's basically they're running their business and using these parking areas where it should be customers for the businesses, and the residents that come here and want to shop or eat and dine, and they're not able to even find a parking space. And where we also, you know, we know how bad it is for parking in the village as it is. So I don't know if it, they do it on their own, or somebody gave them permission to park there. But, you know, that's a concern. Thank you.
Thank you. The lot you talked about is a plaza and center. Right?
No, no, no.
Yes.
Yeah, it's on center.
Yeah, you said, wait. No, I looked, I got Google Map, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's right on, and it's right on the book.
Yeah, it's, it's a nice big piece of land.
Yeah, it's a nice idea.
Thank you. The bells?
Robert Stark, 704 Palma Court, on the Traffic Commission, I might even talk about traffic. The village website has for a long time shown the videos of all the volunteer committees, made them available to the public and to residents for some reason. For the last two or three months, the videos of most of the volunteer committees are not available on the website. You can see the land use and the water just these meetings on LMC media. And I'm not sure why the other volunteer committee meetings are not made available. For example, the last light committee meeting that's available was from April. And most, most of the, and I think the last volunteer meeting that's been shown goes back to June. So I don't know whether that's a violation of Open Meetings Law, whether it is or not. Certainly, there are a lot of people like myself who are interested in watching these local committees and seeing what's going on, and I'm requesting that they be made available. Perhaps somebody can explain to me why they have not been available for the last three months?
First I'm hearing about it, well, I'm sure Sally will, will, we'll look at it tomorrow.
We can look at tomorrow the script, which automatically uploads the videos.
Yes.
It's corrupt. Eddie's coming over from Parks. He's a scripter, he's going to fix the script, and we'll have him up as soon as possible.
So it was a technical glitch?
All right.
Okay, which will be remedied.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Next up.
Sorry, Laura Abadi, I am part of the Traffic Commission for the Village of Mamaronek, but I'm speaking as a resident. I live at 170 Washington. And before I get going, I just want to correct my husband. It, it was 311, it's.
That's kind of your job.
So it's 311, it's, it's Waverly, right before you go over the bridge onto Plaza. And it's an empty lot that abuts the brook, and that's where a construction site is, and the lot is for sale.
Got that, Jimmy?
She corrected me.
There you go.
But I am here, because obviously, we're sitting here, and, you know, I, I'm going to digress from the parking conversation. Perhaps the rest of the Washingtonville Neighborhood Association would like to comment, but I'm going to speak in regard to three parts, and, and then it all ties into one item. The dam, the reservoir, river gauges, and dredging. I could say on behalf of my, the whole entire association, that we support all of this without stall. We, we, and I've said this in emails, and I've said this in person, in texts, shouting at other rooftops. We have no time for stall. This time has gone, time has ticked away. We have been, we are living in distress, waiting for resolve. We need parallel mitigation, and we needed that to happen the day after I just struck and destroyed our village. Whether it be trial and error, whether we spend money that we possibly do not have, we really don't have an option. Otherwise, if we don't have the money, then we seek it, and we get grants, and we figure a way out. But we cannot stall, we cannot wait for another study. We've studied things in nauseam. It's pretty simple, we're in trouble, and we need mitigation whichever way we can get it. And I, I beg this board to make this happen and go through. I mean, Mr. O'Connor could probably comment on some of the river gauges that are upstate New York, that, that are indicative of your cellphone. We could, we could accomplish so many things if we get it done. But we don't have time. Other people feel our pain, and they're empathetic towards us, because they might live high on Delancey Hill, or a section in Oriental that it really doesn't affect them emotionally, but it's affecting your stakeholders, your taxpayers, the people that have the knit and gritty into this community. And we are still, still putting our houses back together, if not fleeing, because we can't afford to. So I asked tonight that we make these things move forward, because we can't wait any further. This should have been done, we should have had a list of everything that we were going to do in parallel mitigation, bulletin, and ready to go, and here you are, and here's the security that you need, and we don't have that. That's your responsibility to give that to us. So I ask that by the time we leave here tonight, that we have some sort of resolve, because we don't have any more time to waste. It's going to rain again. Thank you.
Thank you. There's somebody online with a hand up. Oh, boy. Owner self. Would you like to speak? I'm going to give you the opportunity to speak and promote to panelists. Whoever's identifying himself online as owner self. Owner self, do you have something to say?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. It took a minute for the Zoom to engage, Stuart Teager. I emailed the board. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I emailed the board a email this morning about your entry into executive session for the incentive program, which I believe makes it pretty clear that you had no grounds to have that discussion and vote without the public being present. Has anybody looked at it and the video? Okay, so I will, guess I'll go through it then. I also sent you the Swiatek link that, and the timestamp for it. So it's kind of disappointing, nobody cared to look at it. So it starts off, and trustee Lucas is, questions whether you have a legitimate exemption to go into executive session. And she says, is the incentive program appropriate for 105F, which is for the discussion of a individual employee for that exemption? That's number one, she says. And then we have to add performance review, that's 101. I can't remember what the number is. The mayor says it's 1051D. 1051D is discussion regarding proposed pending or current location. So that was clearly wrong. So trustee Lucas says, so there's a question. Is it appropriate to discuss the proposed incentive program under 1051F, which is the personnel exemption? Attorney asks, is this a matter of collective bargaining? Which is another exemption, collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law. Mayor Murphy says yes. You can audibly hear trustee Lucas under her breath saying no. But the village attorney says, then it's appropriate. And trustee Lucas then says, okay, thank you. So to discuss the incentive program under 1051F, not the collective negotiations exemption, and the performance of a particular person, 1051B, which is actually an exemption for any matter that may disclose the identity of a law enforcement officer. Not a word is said by your attorneys, any members of the board, and it's voted through. As I wrote you, I spoke to the Committee on Open Government, the experts on this, and they said that even under collective negotiations, you don't have a valid exemption, because this applied to people who weren't in a union. So when I brought this up at the 7/11 meeting, the regular meeting after you've done this, the mayor told me we had competent legal counsel. Mayor's rolling his eyes, but he was clearly wrong. You did not have competent legal counsel. You had no exemption. That discussion and vote should have been made in public. Additionally, as I pointed out, the minutes are wrong. So I hope you'll both correct the minutes. And as I asked you in my email, speak some training in open meetings law. Opens meetings law is what protects residents from the board making decisions in the back room, for want of better words. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the first item on the agenda. Resolution authorizing budget transfer from Marine Education Center, part time salary. 2A. This would transfer $3,000 from the general fund, well, enough from Marine Education Center supplies to Marine Education Center part time. Any questions or concerns? Like a motion?
So move.
Second.
Bogey call, please.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Sanchez? Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Next up is item 2A, abstract of manual vouchers. Manual vouchers tonight are $24,035.74. Most of these payments to Westchester Joint Water Works for the village water uses, usage. Any questions? In the motion, please.
So move.
Your second.
Second.
Bogey, please.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Sanchez? Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the reported vouchers. And this comes to $1,437,854.18. Any questions or concerns? Nope. All right, I like the motion.
Second.
Bogey, please.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Sanchez? Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Well, I have a signature.
For your signature.
I'm doing it.
Okay.
Okay.
It's good.
It's a mix.
Want everybody to get paid.
I do, yeah. Old business. The Dog Park is being held, we're waiting to hear from HCMC. Hopefully, by the time we meet again, we will have this finished, and Dog Park will be quickly put into place. The next resolution authorizing additional funding for construction inspection services of Hillside Avenue Bridge. Is that being held? Provision of free parking permits for American Legion Community Council Center, MLV, LMCTV, and Public Library. Why is this kept being held?
Need to have the staff around to start negotiating with those various institutions to develop a agreement whereby we can have services provided to the village in exchange for.
The paperwork problem. Resolution authorizing execution of capacity management operation maintenance program for village sanitary sewer system. We talked about this in the work session. This is a very important document, actually. And what it is, it's a And what it is, it's a blueprint going forward to the future of how the village is going to manage its sanitary sewer system. We are under a consent decree from New York State and we have a, a, a big crudle over our head. If we don't uh, come up with this plan. And I believe irregardless of that, it's, it's a good plan. It'll serve the village well in the future. Uh, it's gonna cost some money, obviously, but uh, maintaining our sewers and our infrastructure, uh, while it might not be sexy is uh, maybe one of the most important things we do as a community.
Mayor, I, I am recused, so I have to step down. I, I don't know if you are gonna move into discussion or if that's it.
You could just not participate.
Yeah.
Whatever you feel comfortable with, but I, I think if you just don't participate, you're fine. Say, so uh, any questions or concerns from the board?
Um, as expressed in work session, I'm not in favor of moving it tonight. Uh, we got it uh, at the beginning of the session. Uh, nobody's had time to read it. Um, I opened it up. There was things that I believe could be better worded. Um, I believe that it's something that needs to be done and we should be doing. It's allegedly committing us to more staff. I don't understand. I need to find out more about that. I guess I'm not unwilling to do it without reading the stuff that we're supposed to understand before we vote up. So I cannot support it. In two weeks, uh, and still need um, getting it done in September.
The, the village is meeting with them in the interim and is expressed by the village manager that uh, it's important that we have this done so that they don't go back to court and ask for uh, what could be crushing damages against us. And then board of any question besides that, is, is somebody has their hand up in the audience? Mr. Teager again? Mr. Teager, can you hear me? Did you have your hand up?
I do. Um, I had my hand up all through um, one of the bills also. So I would like to make a brief comment on this.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You are sorry, Mr. Teager, your, your, your hand is up now. I have you on this matter.
I sent Augie an email during.
Mr. Teager, your time is running. You have three minutes for CMO. So please move on. I'm not going backwards. Move on.
Okay. Does anybody on the board know what the annual municipal sewer maintenance and repair report form is? Anybody? Village manager, anybody? This was basically the county requirement that the village fill out. We haven't done it in five years. So I agree with trustee Natchez that if, you know, you guys get dropped a document, a fifty page document shortly before a meeting, the board should have a chance to review it. Um, I'll use up my other three minutes. For um,
You have three minutes.
Sorry, how much time do I have left, Aug?
Two oh nine.
Two oh nine? Nice. During the audit, during the work session, the mayor talked very animatedly about the land use for termination fees. He said, it's unfair. It's costing taxpayers a lot of money. And people are weaponizing the CBA. I would suggest the mayor has weaponized our building department. I'm sorry, you've been prosecuting me for three years, Mayor Murphy. It's cost taxpayers sixty.
I have to interrupt you because you're lying. I never had anything to do with prosecuting you.
You have a question?
You, you have no.
You don't get to interrupt me.
You have no. You're lying.
What am I lying about?
I had nothing to do with you.
No, I said the village has been caught. I said the village has been prosecuted.
You said I did. Try to remember what you said two, two minutes ago.
Okay, fine. We can go back and check the tape. I apologize. Village has been prosecuting me. You have no ability to do that. I will admit that. It's still. The heckering of people during their time to make public speech just really obnoxious.
It, it, what's obnoxious is that you lie. Then when you get caught in the lie, then twist it. Oh, I might not have said that. The whole audience heard you say it.
Tom, okay, and I apologize. Can I correct myself?
You have an illegal.
Will you let me finish? Are you gonna hecker me out of my time?
No, no, I'll give you your time, but let's face the facts. You have an illegal apartment. It's been found illegal by the Board of Zoning. It's been found illegal by the New York State Judge. So stop saying somebody's prosecuting you. You've had your day in court and you lost. Go ahead.
Are you finished, Mayor?
Yes, I just wanna set the.
You just lied. All right. You said the zoning board has said my apartment's illegal. They have not said that. They gave me two things I had to do. I did them. As far as the zoning board is concerned, my apartment is fine for someone to live there. So please stop lying. You're a public official. You have an obligation.
I'm sorry, this, this man just can't keep twisting, twisting everything.
I'm sorry. Do you know what this is? Do you know what the zoning board decided? Do you know what their decision was?
Hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it's likely goes through life. You know, not caring what you do to your fellow neighbors.
Augie, how much time do I have left when the mayor's done?
You're done.
You're done.
I'm sorry, you spoke for most of my time, Mayor.
I'll give you two more minutes.
Oh, great. Okay. So on the order of the bills, there's a seven um, sixty three hundred, um, I'm sorry, twenty two hundred dollar charge from the zoning board attorney. For the appeal of eight eight six Orietta Avenue. That's a lot of money. I agree. That's seven of his hours. It was about an hour of CBA meeting. I don't know what the other six hours was spent on. But, you know, you first put it, I, not you, but this resolution was to allocate thirty three thousand dollars.
No, it wasn't.
Yes, it was. It's on the agenda, Mayor. Don't lie. I have it in front of me. It's on the agenda. Okay, so please stop and let me finish speaking. So my question is, what's, what did he spend that time on? Was he part of the meeting that the village officials had with the property owners at eight eight six Orietta after our appeal? As you know, you've received letters from the chair of the zoning board. You've received letters from Mr. Tavolachi and I sent you the timeline. It's clear the building department let the property owners at eight eight six Orietta do exactly what the village has been prosecuting me for for three years. You can shake your head all you want, but the facts are the facts and so interrupt me.
Your time is up and, and good luck with all your issues. God bless you. Okay. I feel glad you came. Okay, so we need the vote. I need, I make the motion uh, to adopt the capacity management operation maintenance program.
Some of.
No, you second. I have made the motion.
Oh, me, okay. Then I, I second. So seconded it.
Bogey, please call. Trustee is young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez? Trustee Lucas?
You know, I'm voting yes. I, I'm, I, I, I share some of Dan's concerns and this has been on our agenda for two months now, but we haven't actually gotten the draft of it. And, you know, I'm voting yes because we are under the gun. I do not want the village to be subject to the daily fines that we could be subject to. But I do, I said this in work session, I think that we need to get these drafts in a more timely manner. Because I haven't had time to read it thoroughly because I got it today via email at three. So I'm voting yes, but I think our process could have been better.
I vote yes. Thank you. Uh, resolution authorizing budget amendment for river gauges. And this is being held uh, to we confer with the FEMA about uh, other possible river gauges that we can use that uh, would be under our control and hopefully uh, more advantageous to the village. But it's being held.
We're also gonna get a presentation from uh,
From the U, US Geological.
And if this comes back, uh, I hope that the resolution will be corrected in the second where as from the bottom, which is incorrect.
Yes, absolutely.
Resolution, uh, item four B, uh, resolution authorizing replacement of seven trucks and seven snowplow assemblies. Talked about this in work session. Uh, Jerry, you wanna give us a quick description?
Uh, may these, these are all uh, public um, safety vehicles. Three of them are for uh, first responders. Three of them are for department heads that are on um, the emergency management team. Uh, in addition to that, uh, there is an assistant uh, general foreman truck here. Uh, four of the, of these pickup trucks, four of these seven vehicles are pickup trucks, which will have plows on them. Um, and three of them will be available for um, use when a plow truck goes down, we can easily commandeer. They'll all be here at the village uh, and utilize them when we do emergency snow removal.
Thank you. Okay, I, uh, need a motion?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
Bogey call roll.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
I'm voting no. I would talk about in work session. I'm concerned that we may not need all of this. The worst thing is we're getting a lot of vehicles at one time, which means that we would have to replace them all at one time rather than staggering them out. Uh, and we have tremendous amount of things that we have to do. Not that we can't use them, but I don't think it is the overwhelming necessity to do all of them.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee two four?
Yes, and I will explain vote after the vote.
Yeah, Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
So if I may, I, I'm, I'm voting yes, because I, I know the urgency and the opportunity. But I do echo actually some of the comments that were raised uh, by our friend on the budget committee or who I think we were on his own behalf about uh, uh, the, the um, bonding and the use of surplus. I think we're in a very good, in a good shape because of the last few years. But this year we're rolling and it'll be good to have a check of where we are and where we will, we will be in about two months. So I think that with that, I, I, I'm moving this forward, but I, but I think we need to keep tabs of how much we've been using sur- surplus to this date and what will be done in the next two months.
Okay, thank you. Uh, resolution scheduling public hearing on PLLD, uh, amending chapters one ninety two, three eighteen, three fourteen and A three forty eight, uh, regulation trees. Uh, are we ready for this or?
Well, I think the tree committee raised some issues with it. And, um, and, and, and Bob and Mark weren't able to resolve them before tonight. So I think we should hold off until they
Thank you.
Measure twice, cut once.
Okay, we're gonna hold off on it.
I had an allergy with trees.
So Mayor, if I can, uh, Mr. Paulino is gonna be out for a couple of weeks, so unless Mark wants to tackle this, um, maybe we should deal with it in October, right?
That's fine. Uh, res- resolution authorizing execution of IMA with Westchester County, the CDGB funding. This is a kind of a pro forma thing. Uh, through the federal government, the housing and urban development, uh, the village and uh, a lot of communities uh, get funding to do various projects uh, around the community. We, we replace sidewalks in Washington Bill with the money. We put the spray ground in with the money years ago. They redid Stanley Avenue Park with the money. Uh, usually it's a fifty fifty grant, uh, but it's, it's free money for the village. And uh, the county uh, administers this program for all the little communities, uh, which makes it a lot easier. They're doing the paperwork and everything like that. And uh, we apply through them. So this is just the agreement between the village and the county to continue that process.
I think the sidewalks on the Waverly.
Yes.
Pleasant, which is.
Yes. Okay, any questions or concerns? And we, we didn't have this uh, for a few years, I think about eight years because the county was feuding with the federal government. Uh, and uh, so, you know, we didn't get the money we deserved because, you know, I don't know, South Salem didn't wanna build affordable housing.
Yeah.
Uh, so, that being said, I need a motion.
Some of.
Second.
Bogey? Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yeah.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay, the next one is resolution acknowledging required justice court order. And uh, there's a change to this, so I'm gonna read the whole resolution into the record. Uh, Danny emailed me that.
She suggested the.
Okay, got it. Got it. Okay. Whereas the New York State Unified Court System Action Plan includes initiatives to improve accountability and controls of the justice court finances and records. And whereas section two nineteen oh of the Uniform Justice Court Act requires that the town and village justices annually provide their court records and dockets to their respective auditing board and that such records then be examined. And that, and that fact be entered into the minutes of the board proceedings. And whereas among the initiatives is increased monitoring municipal compliance with section two nineteen A that requires the justice court and justices provide court records for an annual audit. And that said audit was conducted, be and noted in the minutes of the governing body. And whereas PKF O'Connor Davis LLP conducted an order of the Village Justice Court of Village of Monnik for the year ending May thirty first, twenty twenty one. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and the board of trustees acknowledged the required audit has been conducted and instructs the village clerk treasurer to forward the audit report and this resolution to the Office of Court Administration. Okay, I'll make that motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Bogey please.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay. Next up is F, uh, resolution, uh, establishing no parking, uh, restriction on South Barry Avenue. Okay, this is from the northeast corner of the intersection with Guyon Drive to a point sixty feet north thereof. This has been through the traffic committee and I believe it was discussed at the last board of trustees work session. Questions or concerns? Bogey, uh, no, I'm sorry, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Bogey call roll, please. Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yeah.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Holstead Avenue Safety Improvements Resolution Implementation of Funding of a Transportation Federal Aid Project at Holstead Avenue. Dan, you wanna give a brief overview?
Sure. Uh, as the board knows, we received a approximate four million dollar grant to replace upgrade sidewalks along Holstead Avenue from New York State Department of Transportation. Uh, this is the agreement that initiates that project and allows us to get the funding to go for the design portion of that project.
Thank you. Questions or concerns? Your motion? Okay, good.
Some of.
No, wait up, please go.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, the village is also, um, uh, paid for a study about the paving on Holstead Avenue. Are we going to try to um, tie in both the sidewalks and the paving? Um, that way you have a coherent project as, as you're, you're looking to do uh, both sometime in the next two to three years.
Um, the, the funding for the uh, engineering work on that was through several months ago. With this project, we have thirty months within which we can make an award. Uh, but realistically, if my experience with our. But realistically, if my experience with our prior locally administered federal aid project, Hillside Avenue Bridge holds true, that thirty months could quickly turn into four years. So we're looking to get that paving work done quicker because Holstead Avenue is pretty rough shape.
But will they be tearing up Holstead Avenue to do it?
For both projects or just for?
Well, for the sidewalk project.
It will be the sidewalks. Territorial.
We could do the street, then do the sidewalk without impact.
Yeah, like we just did along East Prospect Avenue, C D G project. It really did, there was not much disruption to the street.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Bogey? Trustees young?
Yes.
Natchez? Lucas?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Resolution authorizing per purchase of a rough terrain crane for emergency and recovery response situations and for use in the Mariner Call. This would be the first time the village having, you know, in a while, having our own crane. Our harbor master has a license to operate a crane. This comes in handy during flooding and work done to the river. And also he could obviously use it in his work, bringing docks in and bringing docks out. And we were renting one, and this is really a resolution acknowledging that we are paying less than we thought we were gonna pay before. Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Bogey? Trustees young?
Yes.
Natchez? Trustee Lucas?
Yes, we've already approved, yes.
Yeah. Trustee Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? This has already been an approved project. What we're voting on now is whether we want to pay less or not.
Yeah.
Yes. All right. Crane, resolution authorizing the purchase of replacement vehicle for the John Deere Gator. I'm gonna give a brief synopsis of this.
Sure, a couple of months back, the board approved funding to replace that John Deere Gator with a Kubota. Unfortunately, it's gonna just take way too long to get it. The time is, you know, almost a year. This tour is in stock right now and approximately seven dollars cheaper.
Seven dollars.
Seven bucks.
Seven dollars.
Seven dollars here, seven dollars there. Before you know it, you're talking real money. The budget, the budget committee member is very happy.
Two money saving items in a row.
Don't get that every day.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Call, call roll, buddy. Trustees young?
Yes.
Natchez? Lucas?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
The next up is a resolution authorizing funding for Z B A matter on building department, the building inspected determination. That was what Mr. Teagart was talking about before. And the funding is ten thousand dollars and it's in front of me, not thirty-three thousand dollars. But we've decided, the majority board decided not to place it on the agenda, so we're moving on.
We didn't decide not to.
Yes, yes. Resolution authorizing serving of alcohol at the September twenty-fourth Emeline Diversity Concert. This is anytime alcoholic beverages served at Harbrow Park. The only body in the village that can approve that is the board of trustees. So they're gonna have, I think, beer and wine at the concert on September twenty-fourth. Did I, oh, I did, I'll go back to it. I I skipped, I'll go back. Right now we're doing a resolution on serving up. Could you, could you keep that, please? The sound carries.
Right now we're doing, okay.
Okay, no, we're gonna finish, finish the one I'm doing now. I need a motion for serving alcohol.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll. Trustees young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
I skipped a couple of them, I'm sorry. Resolution amending June thirteen, twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two resolution to correct no parking restrictions on Drury Drive. We had a scriveness error. And we have, this is a a situation that we have already rectified, we're just making it clear for the record. Any others on Drury Lane?
Yes, we all know.
Muffin. I can't, I can't drive past it without singing a song.
I don't know why you're not singing it now.
As I can't really sing, I won't.
Make the motion?
Make the motion, please.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Call roll. Trustees young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yeah.
Lucas?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Resolution authorizing engineering and design proposal for Tompkins Avenue Bridge Replacement. Tompkins Avenue Bridge has now been out a little over a year. And this was bridge that was very badly damaged by Hurricane Ida. And Dan, I'll let you take it from here.
Sure, we've been working with FEMA to review the replacement options. We want, we plan to replace the bridge in a fashion that complements enhances the benefits of the Army Corps project. We were asked our engineer who did the design engineering for Hillside Avenue Bridge to provide a proposal. They've done so, which is attached. It's four hundred seventy-two thousand dollars in change, which is approximately ten twenty percent of the estimated cost of replacement. And we're asking for the budget transfer and the authorization to execute professional services.
Thank you. Glenn, you want to say something?
Yeah, is this gonna be charged under the FEMA expense line in the budget? And I would assume this is a new charge, it's not under encumbered.
Correct.
And FEMA will be paying ninety percent of the cost eventually.
That is the plan.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Bogey, please. Trustees young?
Yes.
Natchez? Lucas?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Next up is resolution authorizing the purchase of lumber, the phase three of dock replacement at Harbrow Park. If you've been down to Harbrow Park recently and looked at the docks, they're looking kind of spiffy. The harbor master and his crew have worked hard in the off season at replacing sections of the dock. And it's looking very nice down there. And this is the next phase, phase three. Questions or concerns?
I expressed my concerns in your session. Only in favor of replacing the docks, you have been three years, but we're not replacing any in accordance with laws of the
Okay, since the work session, the village manager has sent the emails from the various New York State and Army Corps saying that it's a replacement in kind and that how we're proceeding is fine. So I just want to put that into the record, too. I'll make the motion.
Second.
We'll recall, please. Trustees young?
Yes.
Natchez?
No.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes, and I just want to say, you know, I'm very concerned with ADA compliance because it's it's but we're assured that we haven't reached the threshold and that we don't have to make them compliant with the ADA. I think it would be great if we could, or at least make a portion of the docs compliant, because that's a portion of the population that isn't served by our marina. But as long as we're in compliance with the law, I'm happy to do this.
Trustees Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay, item four O is the add an item to the agenda. And the item that we're gonna add has to do with the engineering assessment of the dam. So I need a motion to add an item to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of adding the item to the agenda? Okay, the item that we're adding to the agenda is four P. And it is what, resolution authorizing the authorization to execute professional service agreement to conduct an engineering assessment of the Mamaronek, Mamaronek River. Let me start this over. An authorization to execute professional service agreement to conduct an engineering assessment of the Mamaronek reservoir and dam and initiate a study to determine its future use for flood mitigation. That's exactly what Mr. Kamara was speaking about. Any questions or concerns from the board?
Yeah, I just, I I'm in favor of it, but in the first whereas, it reads in the copy that I have that was in the packet, it says that the notice of violations issued to the village of Mamaronek is actually issued to the village of Mamaronek in Westchester County.
Right.
So that should be added to the present where it is.
What do you see this?
On now therefore be resolved?
Oh, and you said the first whereas?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's fine, as amended by trustee Natchez over. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Bogey? Trustees young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yeah.
Lucas?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay. Communications to board round two.
Traffic Commission, I'm talking about the Traffic Commission. This engineering project that you mentioned, maybe I missed something, or else last month the board was looking to hire an engineer. Assuming that hired an engineer, he's gonna be part of this project.
This is to ask the Westchester County to fund the engineering.
Okay, so my question then is, have you hired the engineer to help with flood mitigation?
My, yeah, there's an engineer that's been hired, it'll be starting October. Jerry, wouldn't it start on October third?
October third, can't start soon enough.
The village has been out without an engineer for, I don't know, decades?
Year and
Just felt like decades.
An engineer.
He had an engineer, he sure had fun.
A couple of items. One thing that I'm not seeing on the agenda is the final phase of the sanitary sewer replacement. We are under deadline with the federal government. We emphasized how important it was to to pass, to set up maintenance of our sanitation sewer lines. But we have one phase to go. I believe Kendler built this for their report on it for the preliminaries. When are we going out to bid on that and when is that project getting started? Because I believe we're supposed to be done with the project by October of next year.
Jerry, do you know when we're gonna start the second phase?
As soon as I finish negotiations with the increased cost of their material, we will start the second phase. I'm still negotiating because there's some significant, we're using the same contract as last project, because we can. But they have asked for some significant, like eighty percent increases in some materials, and I'm trying to work that out. I need a little time. They're not finished with the first inspections until probably the end of the year.
The other, the other question I have is, I see that we did get another bill for the village hall repair. We're up to about six hundred eighty thousand. How far along with it? Do you anticipate a lot more repairs is, you know, are we done with phase one, we're working on other phases? Are you studying it? Because I think there's another, I think the whole project could be up to two point eight million dollars. Where where are we with that project?
The entire, the entire outside, all the bricks have been repointed. The interior remediation has been completed and the rebuilding of those several offices that we had to completely go down to bare studs and actual concrete walls have all been rebuilt. So the next phase is to start working on the windows and the roof and those kinds of things to try to preserve, at least, I should say, save that building.
Thank you for that. There's a one other one that we, we did a a study about a year ago about sidewalks on Rushmore and Old Post Road. At the, even at the time I warned, we're paying, you know, a good amount for this study. Are we gonna use it? Because if you don't use it in a certain amount of time, the study's outdated, you're gonna have to pay to do the entire study again. Finally, I think we have something called Monarch Day.
Monarch Butterfly.
Monarch Butterfly Day, the environmental committee is getting together with the rec committee, it's September twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
I'm not sure exactly what's going on, but my neighbor, who is a member of the committee and, you know, very, very wonderful person, her whole line is, her whole yard is a butterfly sanctuary. If you went up there and looked, I think who you saw it, right? So if anybody has further information on it.
Yeah, well, the Mamaronek, the Mamaronek mayor became a monarch butterfly mayor. I don't say that at work a lot. But I I had to join an organization that I I would, I would work to promote the I hope nobody from work is watching this. Work to promote the rejuvenation of monarch butterflies. This was on the advice of the the Committee for the Environment. So I had to sign a pledge to be a butterfly mayor. And part of that is to have a, to do plantings, as we've done various parks, to encourage monarch butterflies habitat. And and also what part of the requirement is to have a monarch butterfly day.
They love milkweed.
That's it, yeah. Things we, things we used to, because that's that's one of my committees, things we used to consider weeds and just pull out. Well, that's what they need, so we're replanting the pollinate, these pollinator plants, so these these valuable insects can return. And it's actually working, so it's
You almost said weeds.
So we have any time on the Monarch Butterfly Day, don't we, don't we?
Who you what?
The time?
It's it's been in the, are you saying about the
Schedule.
Schedule, it's on the village website, I don't have it off the top of my head. Hey, Patty.
I need to follow up on you. I have two things, speaking of sanitary sewers. I'm hearing now that it should be done by the end of the year. We've been spending two months now on Washington Street, and I understand there's several more streets, including Gertrude Avenue, to be done. How feasible is this really going to be to get done by the end of the year?
So Gertrude, let me know when you want to answer.
Sure, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jerry.
So Gertrude is next, as soon as they're done with Washington, they'll be on Gertrude. We'll be looking up Gertrude and Ralph significantly. I wish we could have done it sooner, but Washington takes or I should say took a while. There's a lot of hurry up and wait when we were required to do sections and testing with the county and things of that nature. But we'll be there to fix the area.
Jerry, when do you think they'll be done with Washington, though? I mean, do we have
I didn't see the schedule today. I think they'll be done in less than two weeks in Washington, on Washington.
So Washington will then have taken approximately ten weeks. How long are they expecting Gertrude and Ralph to take? Because we all know the traffic nightmare that this is, I mean, it already goes through.
So the portion of Gertrude and Ralph for sanitary sewer is much smaller. It's a shorter run, but then there's the culvert. So I may have to phase in the culvert after the sanitary sewer. But the sanitary sewer is a quarter of the of the project or the length of what Washington was, Patty.
The sanitary sewer, and is there a problem with the water line as well, or is it just that sanitary sewer is on the water line?
Yeah, the issue with the county was that they were holding up permits because they asked us to do test pits because of the separation requirement between the sanitary sewer and the water lines. And that's been worked out through the test pit, determinate, determination through the test pit. So it won't be the water line, it'll be the sanitary sewer. But the culvert is the big project in that neighborhood.
I'm sure.
The newly formed one-way street going all the way up to New Street.
Yes. My other question kind of ties into that, and that is sidewalks. I understand there's also sidewalk issues or sidewalk repairs, I should say. At the same time, we're going to be ripping up Gertrude Avenue. Where are there any plans to put sidewalks in the length of the of that street, since there is a grammar school there? And there is not a sidewalk. And there is not a sidewalk on the length of the street.
I would be um um chased out of town if I didn't uh include the sidewalks while we're doing the street. I would absolutely be chased out of town. There are no sidewalks there. It's basically.
I'm aware, I've lived there for sixty-four years.
It's destroyed, so all that'll be done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. Anyone else wish to address what, ma'am, did you want? Yeah, didn't you? Yeah, but I don't see, go ahead.
You were here early.
You were, you you were here at seven thirty. Not everybody does it for the audience.
I'm here to talk about SCRI, which I was here three years ago about SCRI. Does everybody know what it is?
Remind us.
It's, okay, it's a, it's a program run by HHA and it's the landlords get a tax abate, a pay, a payment uh for senior citizens if you're below a certain income. Uh the income was fifteen thousand. When I came here three years ago, they raised it to thirty thousand, but it doesn't say that on the website. It just says the same thing. Every community has, can decide what they want to, you know, grant the landlords a a tax abatement that, you know, you can have. Um rents are now astronomical, four thousand, between four thousand and five, that's what they start at now in the Mamaronek. So, and there is no senior housing anyway to speak of. I mean, there is, but it takes six or seven years, I'll be dead in my bed, so I'll try for that. But the whole point is that every village has the right to raise the threshold. In New York City, it's fifty thousand. You can make fifty thousand dollars and still have your rent frozen. Why here in Westchester County, we don't have that?
Is it Westchester County?
So it it's called the the senior citizens rent income rental exemption program? Yeah, but um the uh, I recall this, several years ago, the village increased the level at which uh a senior citizen was eligible to receive the rental subsidy or tax abatement for the uh the property owner.
Is that not reflected on our website?
I I don't know, is our website or the state's website?
It is, it comes up on the SCRI, they have their own department.
Yeah, it it's it's administered uh in Westchester County by the, I think it's uh
HHA.
Yeah, uh it's been a while. I I could find my old memos, distribute that to the board for some information for you. But um a couple of years ago, it was uh increased. I think at the time, the the board wanted to kind of be in line where where the town of Mamaronek was with their program, uh and that's what the board authorized at that point.
Since thirty grand, thirty.
You know, that's what the board increased it to.
Yeah.
I think it'd be three, four, five years ago.
Right, and it's just to have your rent frozen, that's all. You're still paying pretty high rent. I still pay twenty-two hundred dollars a month.
Yeah. Yeah, but the way that we did, basically, the what SCRI does is uh for the uh the tenant, it freezes their rent and SCRI picks up the new uh rental difference for the property owner.
The landlords this year got two point five dollar rent increase. I'm not fighting for me because I already, you know, I'm already there, I already have it, but you know, my my income has not increased that much anyway, but I'm, you know, I'm just like making people aware of the fact that why does every village and town have a different, you know?
Yeah, it's it's the, the dispenser given the option.
Can 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 we put this on our work session agenda to review uh what we're allowing as opposed to other communities and also in tandem with it? New York State has passed a law uh that allows communities to uh raise the exemption on property taxes uh for senior citizens.
Yeah.
So if if we could put those both on our work session and and we can review them in the future.
Yeah, I I can find the uh VP for a couple of years ago.
So we will look at that. Thank you very much for bringing it up. I I wasn't aware of that.
Okay, it's okay, you have to just keep fighting. Okay, the other issue is, two years ago, I called up the village manager, Mr. Barvier to ask if we could have garbage pails on Richbell Road. I was hanging plastic bags on the fence of Estes Parking Lot just so people could put their garbage there and it was piling up and I was running out of plastic bags. Never got the garbage pails, never, never got taken care of, two and a half years. Covid, everybody was closed, you know, I'm back. And I think we should have garbage fails on Richbell Road.
I I know, I live right across the street from you and I and I, and I'm not sure where the town, there's a, there's a line there.
There's a line there. It's, it runs. It runs like this, like across the short apartments.
Yeah.
Live and then it goes like this. So there's a section that's the village. But I also have to go fight for the town because most of large residences in the town.
Okay.
I just happen to be, my line of apartments is in the village.
Right, you you you're like almost directly across from me.
Okay, then I have to go to the town.
Yeah.
Uh the other thing is, um there's no handicap spaces in that close street. I live, this, this poor lady fighting for a parking space every day. She walks on a cane, she's
You're right.
Completely disabled and there's no, there's no handicap spots.
You're absolutely right.
That, that's horrible.
Uh you know what, and can we ask the uh traffic committee to look at that, please? Handicap on Richbell, you know, on all part of it. No, I'm asking you now.
Sure.
Uh but I I, the five minutes is up and I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no, I have one more thing to say.
Okay.
The the other thing is, I'm not gonna talk about parking, it's not even a, you know, nobody wants to help us with that. I asked people to come and look, they could, you know, release some spots, but it's always a fight between the town and
Okay.
Village. They have different laws. So when you call up the police department, they don't know where they are. They don't know where you're calling from, they ask you your apartment. It's, it's really not very professional.
Okay.
If they're gonna give you tickets and they're gonna, you know, manage this whole thing, then they should know the laws and they expect us to to obey the law.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That was it?
No, I was sorry, I was gonna talk about the dog part too, but.
Uh the dog part's coming.
It's coming, yeah, good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's late, but it's coming.
Get off the first one.
We received an email from um in Robert and Gina on Friday that the village was waiting to hear from the state as to the protocols for Zoom meetings. So right now, if you go on the village website for a meeting tomorrow night, there's no link for Zoom meeting. So can you tell us and for people who are listening, who may want to participate in Zoom, whether there is an opportunity for them to do it or they have to come in person?
So the, as far as the governor's executive order, that expires at midnight tonight. Uh it's my understanding that uh the governor will not be exempt. So that means that we are back to the rules now. The the board did adopt local law. Uh if there is uh a desire to continue with having that uh mode option for attendees.
It was noticed as both a remote and.
It was before.
So I'll I'll make sure that, I'll I'll talk to Sally.
It just, this, then then this will be the end of the hybrids. Report from the village manager.
The mayor on Wednesday, September fourteenth at seven PM at the Mamaronek Avenue School. Uh we will have a community meeting. Uh the meeting is to talk a little bit about uh some of the initiatives that the Board of Trustees have approved over the last year, uh including equipment and some other items. Uh but principally, the meeting is for a special invitation and audience with the um governor's office of storm recovery. Um so far, they had a public meeting in New Rochelle tomorrow night. I think they're doing a virtual meeting. But we actually get the individuals from their, from the governor's office to ourselves on Wednesday night. And some of the initiatives that they're rolling out is about nineteen million dollars worth of what they call Renters Resilient Housing Initiative or incentive. It's where it allows owners of one to four family rental properties um to provide assistance to improve the condition and flood flood resilience of the property. Um each landlord is eligible for up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to make their property more resilient. It also helps with, if individuals want to relocate um out of the substandard or storm damage units, they can do that and the state will provide them up to eighteen months of rental assistance. Uh another initiative is called the IDA Housing Recovery and Reimbursement, uh just over eight million dollars to assist to complete the repairs of storm impacted owner occupied residents. Uh as you know, and you've probably seen some of the news stories, where uh some people just ran out of money while they're rebuilding after, after um IDA. This initiative will allow.
Hey, I'm almost done, I'll call you back.
This initiative will allow them to uh apply up to fifty thousand dollars of assistance. Uh there's also an Affordable Housing Resiliency Initiative. Um it's a provide CDBG funding for site specific mitigation and resiliency of multifamily affordable and public housing developments. This gives about three million dollars per project. And then there's a million dollars left over uh for what they call funds for local governments, public entities and nonprofits to leverage funding resources to complete the resiliency upgrades of public facilities and infrastructure. Um just like we've done at the uh Volunteers Firehouse. We've completely hardened and and uh we're working on uh resiliency upgrades um every day. That provides two hundred thousand dollars. So what we're getting is uh the governor's office staff, governor's staff of the um storm um storm recovery office uh to come directly to Mamaronek to talk to the individuals and people of Mamaronek. Uh it will also be um s- simultaneously translated in Spanish speaking. We're using the school district's wireless translation equipment. So um we'll be there for an hour. Mostly the officer, the office of storm recovery will be talking. Uh but we will have some other information that we share.
And Jerry, just to, we ask people to send their questions in online and we we're going to try and answer those questions in the presentation. And there there are going to be questions taken at the meeting, right?
Well, there will not be questions taken at the meeting because we want to really dedicate as much time to the governor's uh office staff as possible. But we received thirty-nine questions um um ending, I think it was on Friday. And we've already started answering and we'll be returning those answers. We'll be using that information to provide to the to the people who attend. But there'll be additional information. Uh a lot of people are asking about certain uh uh flood related uh um concerns, but we really do have other things that we can update on.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Can you put uh the the summary of that that information on the website?
Uh I haven't yet, but I will. Oh, you mean this, the flyer? The flyer's on the website.
No, no, not the flyer, I'm talking about from, you know, from the governor's office, the storm recovery that the program just initiated or discussed.
Yes, so so they have a PowerPoint, Dan, that they'll be providing. We'll be putting that PowerPoint on on our website. Uh we'll be adding a page for their direct contact as well as uh they have a a an email address, pretty simple. Um I don't have it handy, but we'll make sure that we have all that information on your top, you know, at the front page of the of our website.
Thank you.
Yep, we'll have handouts and everything too, so there'll be a lot of information distributed at that meeting.
And is it filed for the record?
Yeah, I have some kind of a um IMA, I think.
Westchester Power ESA?
ESA, yeah, Westchester Power ESA to file for the record. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Laurie, uh we've, we've been asking, I've been asking for months for um the up the priority list for um the paving of the streets. Uh that was promised to us months ago. Uh can you tell us when we might get it?
Um as soon as the Water Works gives it back to us. Uh the Water Works was the last agency we spoke to about um working on the uh the the streets that we anticipate paving. And they have not gotten back to us yet on which projects they're doing on which streets. So we're still waiting for them to provide that information back and then we'll put the paving schedule to them.
Can we talk them before on this?
Say again, I didn't hear.
Um also, where are we on on timeline on the initiative?
On what?
Municipality.
Um I think Augie can probably give you a better answer. I think we've completed the first workbook. We're um trying to move through the process and I think, Augie, do we have a date for when they're gonna come in and start working with staff? We're not yet.
They're currently putting all the data we gave them into a Excel, into a municipality program. Once that's completed, they'll have a timeline and the next step will be good though. They need three to four weeks. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. For the village attorney?
Uh just that local law four of twenty twenty-two is filed.
Uh minutes, commissioners, boards and committees. Uh Minister of Board of Trustees, regular meeting of June twenty-seventh, July eleventh, July twenty-fifth and work session, regular meeting of August eighth and the AP meeting of August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Uh Minutes of the Tree Committee Meeting of July twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two. Minutes of the Board of Architecture Review Meeting of July fifth and August first, twenty twenty-two. Minutes of the Marine Education Advisory Committee of June eighth, twenty twenty-two. Okay, uh as Jerry pointed out, uh Wednesday evening at the Mamaronek Avenue School. Uh uh to see as many of you as we can, this will be also be televised on LCTV. And uh you can follow along and uh there's, has been a lot done. There's a lot in the works and there is hope for the future, which we didn't have a little over a year ago. So with that, I want to take a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, uh Augie, can you give us an update of what positions are open on the committees? Or can we post it on the uh websites so people will know and if they want to apply?
Uh the following boards and commissions have openings. Board of Ethics is one. Marine Education Center Advisory Committee has three openings. Water Quality Advisory Committee has seven openings. If you're interested in serving any one of the groups, please submit a letter of interest and a resume to the clerk treasurer at bombney.org. Thank you, Augie.
And sounding board, sounding board, that's one, right?
Uh not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
Well, that 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 position is open up, is uh done in December.
But that, there's an opening.
Yeah. Uh a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, Jerry.
It's gonna become Monarch Butterfly prestigious. I mean, Tom is leading the way. I don't want, I, he needs women.
He's what?
He needs women. You gotta become a Monarch Butterfly trust, trust.